Good evening. At 6 o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Abby, would you take your role, please?
Commissioner Hoyman.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Steeler.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Andy. Chair Gerard.
Here.
And just noting for the record, Commissioner Stender is absent this evening.
Thank you. We're asking if you're able, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented or with changes.
Motion to approve it as is.
I have a motion to approve. I have a second.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. It's a non-negotiable motion. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. This is our open forum comes next. This is where if anyone would like to speak about any issue, they are more than welcome to come up at a lectern, state your name and address for the record. Once we have spent a couple of minutes giving your thoughts, once we have heard from everybody, we will close the open forum and move on to our next agenda item. I will point out that we do have two public hearings tonight, both for the interim use permit for the Smokey Oaks Dispensary and for the Chestnut Creek Second Edition. And there will also be a time, at that time, there will be a public open, public hearing where we will welcome comment on either of those applications. So with that, we'll open the open forum. If anyone wishes to speak at this time, please step up to the lectern, state your name and address, spend a couple of minutes giving your thoughts.
It's for either issue. If you can talk on either issue, the Horton Development or the...
You can, you can speak on any issue now. There will be also during both applications that are before us tonight, there will be a public hearing section where we will also take public comment at that time. So you can speak at either one of them that you prefer. Is that clear?
Any of the three.
Anyone wish to speak at the open forum? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the open forum and move on to the consent agenda. We have one item on our consent agenda approved in minutes from the regular meeting of August 13th, 2025. Chair is looking for a motion.
I move that we approve the regular meeting minutes of August 13th, 2025.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move to our first regular agenda item. This is a public hearing for an interim use permit for Smokey Oaks, Smokey Oaks, Oaks Dispensary at 115 Lake Street North. Abby, I believe you're presenting.
I am. Thank you, Chair. Members of the Commission, as noted, Smokey Oaks LLC has applied for an interim use permit for retail cannabis shop to be located at 115 Lake Street North. As a reminder to the Planning Commission, the city has approved adult-use cannabis products in, or businesses in different zoning districts within the city. This is the downtown mixed-use district, which we allow for retail sales. And as long as there is not another cannabis-based business within the required buffer distance, the city can consider IUPs. The interim use permit, that IUP is very similar to a conditional use permit, where conditional use permits run with the land forever. IUPs are a little different in that they are interim, and we can put a timeline on them, and we additionally can impose conditions. Generally speaking, they are person-specific to that property as well, where a conditional use permit will run with the land forever. So the existing, tonight, the Planning Commission's asked to make a recommendation to the City Council on the IUP. The Planning Commission does not have outright authority when IUPs are contemplated. So again, in that downtown mixed-use district, we would be, or the facility, the business would be looking to operate pretty standard hours, as noted in the code, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Monday through Friday; 11:00 a.m., Monday through Saturday; 11 to 6:00 on Sundays. Part of our IUP process is site plan review. The retail sales would be located within the existing building located at 115 Lake Street North. That is a vacant building. Many of you probably realize the property has been vacant for some, quite some time. They would, the retail sales would be the entire main level of the floor, fronting Lake Street North. Site plan review, really the only exterior change is that the applicants would be proposing HVAC to help with the air filtration system, odor control mitigation. That could be located on the outside of the building, or will be located on the outside of the building. I'm going to kind of zoom in here, kind of tucked away, likely visible from the street, but very minimally visible with some screening in front of it. Very small unit being placed in what is a really small unit tenant space on the, on Main Street. Additionally, the code contemplates what kind of signage businesses can have. They are proposing two temporary banners for the business until permanent signage can be installed. Permanent, permanent signage was proposed as part of this application. So this would be the temporary banner would be located on the roof line, or on the pair, kind of the front false parapet roof. And then permanent signage was proposed. As noted, noted in the staff report, where the signs are located is not allowed for permanent signage. We just don't allow for roof signs, even when they're located in that false, kind of false front. So staff is working through with the applicant signage that would be compliant with the sign code and the cannabis license, or the cannabis interim use permit code, that that signage would be located on the windows to also help kind of dress up those windows some. One of the things that the state requires is that the products on this, are for sale, cannot be visible to the public. And so as you'll see in their application, they are proposing frosted-out windows. The desire to kind of have a walkable, pedestrian-friendly downtown, generally frosted windows aren't necessarily the most pedestrian-friendly. So looking at incorporating that signage into those windows to try to make it a little bit more appealing on that Main Street pedestrian scale is one of the things that we're still working through with this application. The signage will conform, though, to the code itself. When we received comments from our agency partners and other staff at City Hall, there are just a couple are worth noting. The building permit, the building department did note this is going to require a building permit for the interior space. This space has been vacant. This could be considered a change of use, and there could be requirements needed to meet accessibility requirements, fire's life safety requirements. So all of those will need to be met through the building permit process. Those are just fairly standard after any sort of planning zoning entitlement. Additionally, though not really related to the interim use permit, the city does have a program in conjunction with the state to remove lead copper service lines. This property has been identified as having a lead copper service line, and it will need to be replaced in a 10-year timeframe. Staff is bringing this up now, though not tied to the IUP. We want to put the tenant and the owner on notice that if they're going to be doing interior repairs, now might be the time to be replacing that lead copper line, to become compliant with city and state regulations. As noted in the staff report, the, the proposal meets the findings of fact required for issuance of an IUP. Included in your packet is a draft resolution for City Council's consideration, which does include 14 conditions. Your task tonight is to take, take public comment, discuss, and then take action on the, the draft resolution. Staff's recommendation tonight is that you recommend to the City Council the approval of draft resolution 09222501, which would grant an IUP to Smokey Oaks LLC for a retail cannabis at 115 Lake Street North for a period of five years. Any questions?
Questions, staff?
I have a question. I know signage is being reviewed by the city. There's, they're allowed to have a temporary banners. Should we be looking at that as to what that is, or the city's going to...
City staff would also approve the temporary banner. We have a temporary banner regulations under code. Businesses are allowed with them a couple times a year for a limited amount of time.
Okay.
Susan?
This business will be required to have the Forest Lake Police Department conduct regular enforcement actions, as it does, to a cigarette or liquor dispensing establishment, correct?
I can't say that they are like cigarette sales or liquor, but the use is required by state to be inspected at least one time a year by law enforcement. We are still working through what that program really looks like, but they will be, have to meet those statutory requirements of being inspected annually.
I did notice that I don't see that unless in condition number 11, applicable standards established in the city of Forest Lake City Code. If, if that, if, if noncompliance with, with age restrictions is included as a potential.
Sure. So the city does have a two-step approval process. I'll maybe just run through the whole cannabis process for everyone. The first thing they need to do is get pre-approval from the state, which includes the plans that you see tonight. After they are pre-approved by the state, they need to get their zoning approval. They need to build out the facility before the city can issue a license to Smokey Oaks LLC specifically for this. The license itself has conditions for those inspections, noncompliance, that sort of thing. Our entitlements process does not. Just, we have a little bit of degree of separation. We really look at land use, not as much of operations, unless those operations start spilling out into the, the public. Generally, our retail is, it's retail use, keep it in the building. That's mostly what planning zoning is focused on. So after they're able to obtain their, if they're able to obtain their city license, then they can go and get their final license from the state. Then that would start those triggers for annual inspections or any sort of random compliance checks, that sort of thing. So the planning zoning IUP, or the city's IUP, doesn't necessarily talk about inspections of that nature, because we address it through the licensing.
And just to confirm, this would be the second establishment in the city, correct?
This is...
If it continues through the process?
Correct. This is the second IUP the city has, would have approved for retail cannabis in the city.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, I have a question about the, the door, the front door. Does it have to comply with ADA specifications as far as being wide enough for, for wheelchair?
I believe that is, so that is one of the comments that our Building Inspections Division did flag is the property's accessibility in general, not just necessarily that front door, but whether or not there's sufficient maneuvering space throughout the retail facility. They'll need to meet those requirements at the time of building permitting. It could change that front entryway slightly. At the moment, I don't have details on that, though.
Is consumption allowed or samples allowed?
No, not on the retail. So the state licensing has, I don't know, half dozen, eight different types of cannabis, adult cannabis use or cannabis businesses. There's retail, general retail, that like this would be. There's also places that allow for manufacturing. On-site consumption is its own type of use, and we don't allow for that type of use in conjunction with the retail use.
Is there anything in the city's code about the products being sold, being consumed outside of the facility or on neighboring properties?
The state law defines where adult cannabis may be used and generally does not allow it in public places. Additionally, the city's code does prohibit it from being consumed, certainly in public parks. I would have to go back and look at that ordinance to see if we defined it in any public space, but I know we specifically had a exemption to allow, to not allow it in public parks.
Okay, because I think there's the large communal parking lot behind all of these buildings. That would be a very suspect area for that to happen.
Yeah, and I believe that that is in violation of the state law requirements, because if I remember correctly, you need to, consumption can only happen on private property. And I think that there is like even maybe an indoor requirement. All of the parking lot behind the property is public parking. Those are good questions, and I can follow back up. I don't have the answer tonight.
Abby, on the other one we approved, can you refresh if I remember? I thought we had approved that for three years versus five years?
I believe that this body wanted to reduce it to three years, but the City Council approved it for five.
All right. And then my second question is, Abby, is, is the city have a cap on? I know we have to allow at least two. Do we have a cap on the max number in the city, or are we just going to let the free market dictate?
So just for everyone that's in the room, the state law does require one license is required for every 12,500 people in the city's population. So because we have a population over 12,500, we have to allow at least two. If our population exceeded 25,000, then we would have to allow at least three. The city's two would be meeting that state requirement. We have asked the City Council twice now if they would like to cap the number of retail establishments within the community. Thus far, the City Council has not wanted to do that. They have wanted it to be a kind of a free market. When this goes to the City Council, we do plan, staff does plan to ask that question again. There are a couple just small little areas that I think we need to kind of ask some questions and get a little bit more detail. Currently, the city does receive about three, two to three inquiries a week for new businesses, and most are surprised that the city does not have a cap. And so staff has maintained with the City Council that we should have a cap. We can always start small, and we can always expand later. But should we all of a sudden, you know, have many, many businesses? It's hard to scale back once you've kind of permitted things. So I'm going to have that conversation with the council. I think this is forwarding to them September, their next regular meeting. I don't know the date off the top of my head.
Thank you. Any other questions, staff? The applicant here, wish they had anything? Abby, you know if they're here.
Oh, he is. Yep.
Do you wish they had anything, sir? We, we ask you to step up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, how's it going? My name is Scott Hanson. I'm one of the principal owners of Smokey Oaks. So I grew up here.
Scott, do you have an address, please?
Oh, yeah, sorry. So I, 14,000 Poagama Lake Road, Pine City. So I live up in Pine City. I grew up here, Forest Lake. I actually grew up going to that specific boat launch for 4th of July every year. I moved to Oregon and have a lot of experience in this, and I understand there's like probably a lot of worries with smoking in public and security. I want to stay on top of that. I just want to mention that, that we're like hoping to work as closely with the city as possible to make sure we're following all the rules and just making that area a, still a really safe place for everybody. I also just wanted to say I did send a couple other photos of the signage, and I changed some things based on the, the meeting today. I read through the whole Planning Commission. I said they, they wanted me to remove some things, and so I sent some extra pictures just so you could see what other kinds of blockage we would have for that front area. So don't have to do it tonight, but if you have them, you can...
I just found them, so I can show them here. There's two different options that Scott had emailed over.
So this is kind of like a more idea, right? I'd probably pay an artist to really do really good work here, and then put that up and put our logo kind of on the window. So art probably on the inside of the window, and then put the logo on the outside. The other one that I gave was some curtains. And I figured, you know, if I get some nice curtains, that could work too. But I mean, I just want to give options and show like we're willing to work with you guys. However, we need to do to make it as safe and, you know, as compliant as possible. I know, I worked in this for seven years in Oregon. I've helped them expand into other states, a couple different companies into New Jersey, Missouri. And I know the number one thing is always just staying compliant and like working as closely with the city as possible. If you're not doing that, I just feel like the, the business doesn't thrive, you know, in general. The public wants it to be a safe space, and I don't want people lording outside the building, smoking, and, you know, bringing down the quality of the location I'm trying to build. Really trying to go for a high-class location here, so I think that's it.
Any questions at the applicant? Thank you for your time. This is a public hearing. We ask if anyone would like to speak to this application for Smokey Oaks Dispensary. Please step up the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Spend a couple of minutes giving us your thoughts. Once we have heard from all parties, we will close the public hearing. It'll come back to the Planning Commission for a decision for the City Council. So with that, we'll open the public hearing at 6:22 p.m. Does anyone wish to speak to this issue? I'll ask again. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? Abby, do we have anything to be read into the minute?
No.
Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing at 6:23 p.m. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Oh, and just for your edification and knowledge, there's a nice write-up with the 14 conditions and verbiage on page 10. It starts. Hearing no conversation, I'll make a motion to recommend the city to approve the IUP request based on conformance with the applicable code requirements in contraria when issued through draft resolution 09-22-25-01, subject to the, I believe it's 14.
14.
14 conditions.
I'll second that for you.
I have a motion to second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries. This will go to the City Council for a final decision. I'm looking at you, Abby.
Thank you. And September 22nd.
September 22nd. Good luck with your project. We'll move on to item 7B, a public hearing for Chestnut Creek Second Edition. Two items, a preliminary plat and a PUD amendment. Abby, I believe you're presenting.
I am. Thank you, Chair Gerard, and members of the Commission. Tonight before you, D.R. Horton M.N. has requested the city approval of planned unit development amendment and a preliminary plat for Chestnut Creek Second Edition. For reference, I've got it up on the board here for folks who are up on the screen. Chestnut Creek was originally designed, approved by the city, and started in 2016. And that was a 220-lot subdivision that half of the property had been developed. So we've got half a neighborhood that's kind of been sitting out there, almost completely developed out for nearly 10 years. Tonight, the D.R. Horton has come in looking to develop the second half, and this preliminary plat is the opportunity to vet through the proposal before you. It's about 52 acres, give or take a little, single-family detached homes on both 55-foot and 65-foot wide lots, the net density of 3.36 units per acre. They're looking to build 119 new homes on that west side. So included in the staff report for you tonight is the notation that the property is guided for low family, low to medium, single-family residential, and needs to meet a density of three to six units per acre. That's a part of our comprehensive planning requirements and Met Council requirements for housing density within the city. As noted in the staff report, that net density of 3.36 does, is the, I think it might have been mistaken here, that's our gross density, our net density is, no, our net density is 3.3. Regardless, we have actually 2.3 units per acre with the current development site as proposed.
Gross is 2.3.
Gross is 2.3. It's mis, it's misstated in the staff report. So we are, even though we are putting quite a number of homes on those 52 sites, our gross density isn't, our net density is not meeting our mandatory three to six units per acre. Let's see, it's like looking at me. Regardless, depending on how we calculate our density, we're between 2.3 and 3.36 units per acre. Planned unit developments are allowed in our code to permit more creativity and flexibility. As noted already, this was approved as part of a planned unit development, and page two of the packet, of the, the development report includes the bulk standards for the development and the flexibilities that the developer is asking for as part of this development. So the current zoning district is MXR 1, which would allow for a minimum of 7,500 square feet per unit. The development was approved to have 7,700 square feet per unit, so we are now allowing a minimum lot size smaller than what the development was originally allowed. There's two areas that the developers asked for some relief, and one of them is to allow for the 55-foot-wide lots to be located on 7,100 square foot lots, and then to have a reduced side yard corner. So if you've got a corner lot, your front yard is 20 feet, those side yards allowing for 20 feet as well. Or the front is 25 feet, allowing for 20 feet as well. Water and sewer mains were installed through part of the development site with the first phase of Chestnut Creek. I should have been kind of going through here for you folks. Sorry about that. The development would finish off the installation of utilities connecting to an existing line on 210th Street North. The extension creates a looped system, which is going to help improve the utilities in the area that are, that don't have necessarily the pressure needed for adequate service. All the properties in the neighborhood are serviced. It's just will enhance the service through this neighborhood. Condition of, of approval by the public utilities would that we be vacating any sort of old easements needed for those utilities. Stormwater treatment is proposed in five different treatment basins. There would be some slight modification. No modification would be needed, but part of the stormwater runoff would be directed to those existing stormwater and wetland facilities. I'm going to scroll to this page here. One of the things that the development is doing is trying to compensate for some of the issues that were a result of the first phase development. So in the first phase development, many of the homes and their associated improvements were built encroaching into wetland buffer areas. So it's no fault of the existing homeowners that are there, and neither the city nor the watershed has taken action to, for any sort of retribution to existing homeowners. What D.R. Horton has done is worked with the watershed district to increase wetland buffers on the west side, so this proposed phase, to compensate for the buffers that were lost, the buffer areas that were lost in, that were lost in the first phase. It does require about an additional acre of wetland buffer area. So we recognize that that first phase... So we recognize that that first phase buffer area issues were a result of just multi-jurisdictions having some influence in the area and maybe not having well-documented property records for wetland areas. So what the city is now requiring is that all buffers would be located within platted drainage and utility easements. Buffer signage would be installed in on each lot. Lot surveys would show all boundaries of wetlands, buffers, and sod limits. Those would be recorded against each property and sale disclosures would include specific language to wetlands and wetland buffers. The streets are proposed to connect to the existing street system coming in from separate neighborhoods. Both the existing Phase One and the associated properties to the west. Connections would be made for future development to the north and the south. And city staff has requested that the developer provide temporary cul-de-sacs on all of those areas where we would not have roadway connections. That is one of the things that the city has been requiring, city staff has been asking for, and the council has been requesting. Because oftentimes what will happen, and a good example here is in lot twenty-two and twenty-eight. We've got our minimum kind of roadway there, got houses on both sides. There's really no place for service vehicles, utility trucks, mailman to turn around. And so we really do need those turnaround radiuses. Trail and sidewalk connections would be proposed along one side of all public streets. The sidewalk would be the responsibility of property owners. And the T-tatch, single-family homes would be meeting the minimum parking requirements. And at this time, no signage is being proposed. One of the other items worth noting is the developer is still proposing some woodland preservation throughout the site in areas that have not been disturbed by the existing grading that had happened on the property. Additionally, landscaping would be installed on the properties. And that landscaping would be done with respect to making sure there was sufficient enough property or landscaping within front yards and rear yards. If rear yard, not noted in the staff report, if the rear yard woodland area seems in excess, staff would necessarily, would look to the planning commission and city council at final plat to accept that instead of the addition of additional trees. We don't want to over-trade properties. Parkland dedication has been an item of discussion with the developer. During the initial development of Chestnut Creek, the city did not require parkland dedication as part of either the first phase or the second phase. So the developer is proposing tonight a lot configuration that is very, almost identical to what had been originally approved in the original preliminary plat that has since expired. As a result of that, no parkland is being proposed to be dedicated. This is going to be going in front of the city's Park and Recreation Commission next week for their recommendation to the city council. Developer did hold a neighborhood meeting regarding this, and that is one area that the neighborhood has expressed concern. That neighborhood meeting was held on October, August twenty-seventh here at City Hall. So staff recommends you review the preliminary plat, PUD requests, take public comment, and then discuss the proposal before making a recommendation to the city council. Staff has included the findings of fact, which do note that the project is in conformance with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. It is consistent with our subdivision and zoning regulations. Plans consistent with that first, the original PUD, the first-phase addition provides uniform lots, circulation, landscaping, open spaces. It will not negatively affect the health, safety, welfare, or create an unmitigated burden on the community. In that additionally, the project would be approved with flexibilities, but otherwise is consistent with all other city codes and requirements. So upon your discussion, staff does recommend you move to recommend the city council approve Chestnut Creek Second Edition. And there are four conditions of approval. And we can go through those if you'd like. Do you have any questions for me?
Susan?
Did you say that sidewalks will be the responsibility of the individual property owners?
After the sidewalks are improved, maintenance of sidewalks are.
Maintenance.
Maintenance, yes.
Okay.
The developer will be installing sidewalks. Yeah, that was, yeah. I recognize.
Make sure.
No, we're not going to pass that on to our future homeowners.
Other questions, other questions to stand?
Abby, do you know what the target audience is for these homes, especially the four and five-bedroom homes?
I don't know, but the developer is here and that's something that definitely you could ask them.
I noticed that a lot of the lots are really close to wetland.
Yep.
And I was over at Shadow Creek Development. And some of, the one house there, it's like five feet to the downhill of the wetland, which would make it pretty impossible to raise children. You know? Because I, I mean, I grew up with a half-acre lot and there was plenty of room to play. But I'd be afraid to raise a family where the child could easily get into the wetland. Is there going to be a requirement for fencing or anything for the wetland to protect the kids and?
There, there is not any requirements for fencing, but the wetland buffers are non-disturbance, are intended to be non-disturbance areas where the natural vegetation should be a deterrent. But no, there is no requirement on the city, nor do we have any code requirements to put in fencing along water bodies or wetlands.
Other questions?
Kind of what Jesse said, are the homeowners going to be required to carry extra insurance for being the wetlands are so close to their houses?
I can't answer that question. I don't know an answer to that. General public might be able to in public comments tonight, share their experiences. But wetlands are designed as part of the stormwater system. So the city does review, the city and the watershed district do review the water going into the, anticipated stormwater going into this, these facilities and to make sure that the low-floor elevations are above the bounce associated with the stormwater or wetland areas as the water comes in, drains, goes up and down.
And I also noticed with the landscaping, it looked like they were putting the trees in the front yards.
We do have trees proposed in front yards.
Do they have to be set back so far from the streets?
They do not have to, they have to be out of the right-of-way.
Okay.
The developer and I have talked about that that can be a challenge when we do have these narrowed front yard areas in our MXR-1 district. But do also acknowledge that there is probably an opportunity to, they don't all have to necessarily be over-story, you know, big trees. But yes, they, they do need to be in the front yard areas.
Susan?
Chair Gerard, you may, you may remember this better than I. I could have sworn that when we did the first addition here, there was a commitment because of the small lots, that there would be a significant park in the second addition. Well, but I, I may be misremembering, but that's.
Excuse me, Susan.
Yes.
There will be a time for public comment. I ask for the corpsman here and to keep everything to yourself until it's the public comment section. And we will listen to that person one at a time. Thank you.
It's okay. We're, we're a long way here from any of our existing parks. And that's, that was kind of why I asked what the target demographic is.
To answer your question, I don't remember.
Okay, I need to go back.
Chair Gerard, if I might just speak to Commissioner Young's comment at least. When Chestnut Creek's planned unit development was approved in 2016, the preliminary plat for both phases was approved. So the preliminary plat, what you're doing tonight, had already been approved without any sort of parkland.
Okay.
The reason we're doing this again is ten years have elapsed and that preliminary plat approval has since expired, us going through it. Now, there is, discussion has been had with the developer and neighbors in the public, or the neighborhood meeting that when we are reevaluating a development and we are kind of reopening or looking at amending the planned unit development and asking those questions, what are the, what do we need, what do we not need necessarily now versus what we thought we needed or we didn't need ten years ago? The parkland has come up quite significantly. I have discussed this with Parks staff and public works staff. The thing that I will just share with the Parks Commission, which I don't have a hundred percent prepared, so I'm going to do it on the cuff for you folks. Can I get to the subject property in my mapping? For reference, this is one of the two subject parcels you're looking at the preliminary plat for tonight. We are talking with developers, both to the north and to the south of this subject property. This is an area just to the south that the city has identified in its Comprehensive Plan as an area for potential parkland acquisition. The city is in conversations and does have a determined, complete preliminary plat for this parcel here in which land dedication is being contemplated. And as we look at the development of these three parcels and conversations with any developer, we've been looking at other parkland that could be added into this area. Understand that is not in the boundary of this neighborhood. But one of the goals of the city is to try to achieve parkland within a ten-minute walk of our neighborhoods. This would be sufficiently within ten minutes. Next, we do have park, develop, for future development opportunities to the north, specifically along two-hundred-and-tenth where we do have an off-street trail that would be coming through to Harrow. Harrow also anticipated for an off-street trail. Where staff does believe parkland would be more responsible in that it is greater connectivity for more residents throughout the community when we are in those pedestrian pathway systems. Now, I recognize that that does not mean parkland today for this neighborhood. But I do at least want to acknowledge to the planning commission, and we'll share with the Parks Commission next week, that there are other opportunities for parkland within very close proximity to this neighborhood, both the established one and the new half, so to say, that we anticipate would be forthcoming within a short amount of time. Now, I understand that that's not necessarily the short amount of time that this development is developing though.
So that parkland and its development is listed in our twenty-year capital improvement plan currently?
Not in capital improvement, in our Comprehensive Plan. No, I do recognize that there is the question of how do parks get paid for and that's how you put them into a capital plan. We can't put into capital plans, though, parks that we, the development of parks we don't have. And so as the city acquires land for new parkland infrastructure, we would be putting those into our capital plans for build-out as well. As well as maximizing parkland dedication in the areas to be able to develop those parks.
But the, the dollars to acquire parkland is in the twenty-year capital improvement plan?
So the, all residential development, all develop, all subdivision plats are required to dedicate land for parkland purposes within the city. Residential plats are required to dedicate ten percent of their land area. However, the city may accept cash in lieu of land dedication. So when I talk about the development here, we are looking at a hard land donation, not a cash in lieu. For Chestnut Creek, if the city elects to not dedicate land but accept cash in lieu, then that cash will go into the parkland system for future parkland development. At the moment, no. The city is, does not have money in its current budget or its capital improvement plan for parkland acquisition because we have other mechanisms in place to acquire land for parkland.
And I can think of at least one large residential development that we had neither dollars nor land.
Well, that was before my time and maybe before you had professional staff to help you through these processes.
The large apartment building that said that they were having their own pool.
Well, so I will say, the parkland dedication requirement, state law only allows us to apply that at the time of subdivision. So you have to plat property in order for us to lawfully acquire land or be in lieu of land for dedication purposes. So I can see how that may have happened in the past. But I would hope that you can trust me in saying, we are doing a lot better, I would say, at preemptively trying to not put ourselves in those situations with future developments.
Other questions to stand? Any?
I have concerns on how small the lots are to begin with. Asking to go even smaller and then there not being a park. There are use apparently disruption, not disruption, opinion from other people in the area that there's not enough park space. But I just, as presented, I just don't feel comfortable supporting this. I'd like to make yards great again. I think people being able to play outside their own homes, in their yards, with their animals is really the best way to go. And allowing this small of lots, forcing trees on them, forcing sidewalks on them, I just is, I just don't see that as a great, great neighborhood.
Thank you. Other questions or comments for staff? Hearing none, is the developer here? Good evening, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Deb Ridgeway with D.R. Horton. Our address is two-zero-eight-six-zero Kenbridge Court, and we are located in Lakeville. Thank you for having us tonight. I, we're here really to answer any questions, and there are obviously going to be some questions probably and comments from the neighbors. To answer some of the questions that have come up, as far as the target market, Commissioner Young, we are, generally, it's a two-story home plan, so it will be families typically with younger children, not always, but that's typically the target market. And then to answer the buffer question, yes, it does appear on the plan that the buffer does come pretty close to the homes. We actually try to create a twenty-foot buffer from the building pad to the buffer. And the building pad doesn't necessarily have the whole house on that building pad, so there's usually an additional ten feet. So there's about a thirty-foot of sodded backyard, if you will, till you get to that buffer area. As far as insurance requirements for flood insurance, we aren't aware of any based on the requirements for stormwater and the elevations that we need to create to keep any of the basements or houses from flooding. So I do, we do look forward to hearing from the neighbors if there are any issues with that on the existing homes. As far as the park, we are open to, we did identify a location on the site plan that we could put a park if that's the direction that the city wanted to go. So we are flexible in that aspect. And I believe that was it. If there's any other questions, we are certainly here to answer.
Commissioners, excuse me. Questions of the applicant?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I get a question. How close are the houses, like ten feet apart, fifteen feet apart?
They're about fifteen feet apart. So we are asking for the seven-and-a-half-foot side yard setbacks, which is within the city's ordinance. So they're a minimum fifteen feet apart. And that'll vary because our houses, the widths vary with the different product lines. So we do have different floor plans that fit into each product line, so they're not necessarily all going to be within fifteen. There may be a little bit, a little bit greater space between them.
Is that, is that the minimum, or are they going to go smaller?
That's the minimum.
City code requires seven-and-a-half feet per, so it's fifteen minimum between the houses.
Yes.
So.
Jesse?
So if we, if somebody had to get a service truck in the backyard to trim trees and stuff, that would be basically impossible on your own property?
I think that within the, I, I'm not sure how, how we, this is standard for us and for national builders. In fact, most builders now have the minimum.
In fact, most builders now have the minimum with the 15 feet between.
Because I know we had a tree issue in our neighborhood, and people, they had to ask me to use my yard space to remove trees. And if I would've said no, I don't think they would've, it would've ended up costing a lot more money to remove the trees.
Susan?
Do you, you, you've run your numbers, so do you know what the mix of the, you've got a large number of four and five-bedroom model types. Do you know what your mix, your plan, your, your anticipated mix of the four and five-bedroom homes is appeared, compared to the three-bedroom homes will be in this development?
I do not, um, and that really is dictated by our marketing team. Right now, we do sell homes on speculation, so we will build a house for sale, but we will also bring in, um, like if a buyer wanted to come in and build a specific plan on a specific block, we do do that as well. So, I don't have that information.
No, I, I, I looked at the information on the, the housing types. Just upfront, my concern is that a four or five-bedroom home is gonna need at least four or five cars. Yes, when the kids are little, but as soon as they hit 14, um, between the toys, et cetera. And have some experience with trying to deal with snow removal and parked cars and boat storage, et cetera, et cetera, especially in Forest Lake where we do love our toys.
Yes, we do. Any?
Yeah, and staff may be able to help, but on the wetland buffer area, is that where the stormwater treatment is also gonna go, or stormwater ponding?
Stormwater ponding will not be in the wetland buffer areas.
Okay. So, like the lot drainage, where does that go? Uh, what my concern is, where I'm leading with the question is, are there utilities potentially in those wetland areas or wherever the stormwater management is that will also eventually need to be accessed for maintenance or clean out?
So, one of the things, um, identified in the staff report and in the engineers' comments is the need for increased easement areas to access the stormwater utilities and the, the maintaining of ponds. That is something that we have talked with D.R. about, that, um, that, that will need to find the sufficient easement area on, by the time of final plat. So, that is something that we have identified as an area that does need a little bit of work before final plat.
Because this, on the maps that I've had a chance to look at, I don't see any give.
Um, at the moment, no. They have, the engineers' comments do identify that we do need to, and the developer applicant is aware that that is probably going to result in a slight redesign of some of the lots.
Thank you.
Uh, what about, um, light pollution? Are you gonna have, like, streetlights every block or every two blocks, or?
So, streetlights are dictated by the city code, um, and we work with the electric company to identify those locations as staff reviews where they go. Typically, it's on every corner and maybe every so many hundred feet.
Yeah. Generally, every intersection, for sure, we're gonna have at least one streetlight just for vehicular safety matters. And then the city code does require streetlights so many distance between each other. I don't have that specific number, I can look that up, but yes, the city does require all new residential developments to have streetlights for safety purposes.
And that's, that's, they're on 24/7 then, or at, at dusk, from dusk to dawn?
Probably a dusk to dawn. I can get that answer for you. But not, I can't have the dusk to dawn answer tonight. I can get the distance requirements if you'd like them right now.
Abby, if I can jump in, Mike Su at D.R. Horton. The engineering report said every 200 to 300 feet for streetlights depending on curvature of the streets and intersection spacing, so it's roughly around 300 feet every streetlight, but that may vary depending on curvature of the streets and intersections.
And the only reason I ask that is, um, there's kind of a push for, uh, reducing light pollution in the cities and stuff, in the, um, I think, like Forest Lake, a lot of people still consider this rural, and so, you know, being able to look at the stars without a lot of light pollution is, is a desirable thing, so.
And, and we'll take the lead from city staff on what they think is the appropriate light for each of these streets there. As Deb mentioned, we work with the electric company to install them, so there, I assume there's a standard light that the city of Forest Lake requires, and we'll follow that, and we'll work with city engineering staff to figure out what's the right spacing to get the right balance of safety and not produce light pollution any more than we have to.
Thank you.
I have a question. So, we, we were talking about the distance on the wetlands, and you said you had about roughly 10 feet from the back of the building, say, which would be a 30-foot setback. So, do you, do you have enough room for a decent deck on the back here?
Yes, and that's why we oversize the building pad, um, from our house footprint so that we, so that homeowners can add that deck without having to worry about soil corrections.
Well, I'm more concerned, I don't want any variances coming to me.
No, so the, no, there would not be any variances for this.
George, or if I might add, um, early on before D.R. had even put pen to paper, we identified, or let them know the issues that were identified in the first phase. So, the, um, issues with the wetland buffer encroachments directly had to do with patio and deck installations into those areas. So, that's something that the then-staff and, and the then-city, we'll say, did not preemptively identify, and so when buildings were being proposed, they weren't necessarily taking a look at how close to that setback and would there be those future improvements, much less when patio or deck or something was approved, whether or not it was actually encroaching into those areas. I do just want to at least commend D.R. for hearing the city staff early on that we would, we are gonna do every effort, we're gonna take every measure we possibly can to prevent what happened in the first phase to those future homeowners, because I think you are gonna hear from some of the homeowners tonight that do have challenges because of how that prior development had come to be.
Okay. My second comment is just a personal one. I noticed, and thank you for sending all the fronts of the houses, you know, we got these nice sidewalks and, and now, some of your houses, like the Elder and the El Dorado, are, um, garages with a doorway, and personally, just grates on me, but I, I also can't dictate what somebody buys when I understand that, but I do like the ones that have like a front room or something there, but I also understand on some of these lots, getting a three-car garage in there. And my main complaint on that is that if you drive on North Shore Trail down the lake, trying to squeeze as much house as you can on there, there's three-car garage and a doorway, and it's not much streetscape. Of course, you take your life in your hands when you walk down that street, but that's a different discussion. So, that's my comment. Any other comments or concerns? Thank you. We may have more comments for you afterwards.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. We ask if anyone wishes to speak to this application. Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, spend a couple minutes, uh, giving us your comments on it, um, and then once we have heard from everyone, we will, uh, close the public hearing. So, this is, you're gonna, this is your time to speak, and, because then when, when we're done with the public hearing, it'll be our time to speak. So, I just want to make sure I'm very clear on, um, the noise level in here. And we have two issues that we are discussing tonight, the PUD amendment and the preliminary plat. So, with that, we'll open the public hearing at 6:59 PM, and anyone who wishes to speak, and go ahead, sir.
Sorry, I probably jumped the gun, so...
Well, it's, you know, someone needs to be first.
There you go, there you go. So, so, Commissioner, my name is Mac, it's actually Mackenzie Gupta, but I go by Mac, 7163208 Cove North, so I'm in Chestnut Creek Phase 1. And so, thank you for being here today, thank you for your time. What I want to tell you is that what you got and what you heard, um, was some emotions of a community that's pretty close-knit. And you've heard some of the concerns that were referenced as it relates to the, the wetland setback issue. So, I'm gonna talk about four different issues, and I'm gonna try to be as succinct as possible. Every house in that development but for maybe one or two were put together and improvements were completed, um, from 2016 all the way up to 2020. And there are decks in there, there is landscaping that's done, there's fences that were done, and about four years ago, I think it was Comfort Lake came by with a bunch of signs that says, "You can't improve on, past this point." And it was points where it was already improved, meaning there were already decks. There is one house, I believe, where the basement goes up to the, where the actual back of the house goes up to the wetland buffer. And this is a situation where anybody that's here that's a homeowner will tell you that the various builders pointed out, this is where you can improve to, this is where you can improve to, this is where you can improve to. And then now they have a sign that tells them that they can't improve past places they already did, and they're concerned about that, they're concerned about how does that, how does that affect the resale? And the reason why I bring that up is because that was a comment that was made either by the home seller, sellers on behalf of the original developer. And another comment that was made by the various builders on behalf of the original developer or from the original developer was the idea that Phase 1 and Phase 2 are gonna be harmonious, and we're not just gonna have this Phase 1, which are beautiful houses, we're gonna have Phase 2 that's gonna mirror that, plus we're gonna put a park in there. And our original governing documents from the homeowners' association actually identifies that, it references the park, it references Phase 2. So, it references the park dedication fee, and we've all been hearing that all the way through. So, when you hear, and, and you may have heard a little frustration from the back here, it's because of the fact that this closely, close-knit community has continued to identify that these are the representations that were made all the way through by the original developer that was originally going to develop Phase 2. And again, then, that leads into the idea that there's a homeowners' association that requires, I wouldn't say vigilant, but pretty specific upkeep to make sure that the houses are maintained, to make sure that the yards are maintained, to make sure that there are certain structures that we can't have, all to make sure that the community is kept to a certain level. And in that, we have community, um, fees that are covered for the landscaping for the front, community fees that are covered for the maintenance of the monument in the front, all of which, now Phase 2 is going to use the same ingress and egress, if you will, and D.L. Horton says, "Yeah, but we're not gonna be part of that community, we're not gonna chip into that, we're not gonna have anybody do any homeowners' associate, association payments." All concerns us because of the idea that there was this, a commitment to each other to maintain some consistency of the house. And now here you have this second development or second phase where you're going to have a situation where the houses are gonna be more compact together, where there's not going to be the same type of harmonious, um, reflection of, of what the original Phase 1 looks like, because you've got more houses, you've got them closer together, you've got them, for lack of a better word, pretty bunched in. And so, I understand that there are set numbers of rationales you have to look at for what your decision is, and to a certain extent, you have to make those pretty neutral. But I would say that our view, or my view, is that there is a complete lack of harm, of harmonious connection from Phase 1 to Phase 2, and that the idea that there was going to be a park, now we aren't gonna have a park, I mean, what you heard a little bit is, well, there might be one over here in this area sometime, but if there's not, then there'll be one over here in this area sometime. And that's what we heard all the way through, different promises identifying that this is what we're supposed to have, this is what's gonna happen originally. And so, we see our community that is a set number of houses and a set number of, of, kind of appearances, and the representation was, it was going to continue. And I, I just urge you, to the extent you can, to, to vote against any variances requested because of that, particularly because I think there's just too many houses in too small of an area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Carl Ziegler on, uh, 20759 Greystone Avenue, just on the, uh, middle of the west side there. Um, I think what you heard from the gentleman here is pretty much gonna mirror what a lot of people are gonna say. I'll make a few points that, uh, kind of, uh, are bulleted for him, uh, and everybody else. First of all, the, the fact that there's no unmitigated impact on, on the area, which is in the staff report, that can't even be possible. With the amount of traffic, just gonna be a minimum of fourfold with 119 houses, drops right, right smack in the middle of Nowhereville with no easy access to 97, Goodview, or anyplace else, is gonna give a lot of unmitigated issues to a lot of people. Uh, so that's definitely gonna be a problem, um, for just the traffic and construction as well as when the, uh, the final plat is finally, if it's finally done with 119 houses. The number of houses in that area are just gonna be way too many. I've walked that area many times, I'm sure some of the other people that live there have. I've also flown over it. That is one big wetland, and while it's got the drainage ponds for the, uh, for hopefully the mitigation of water, right now, we've had water running down Greystone Avenue as the roadway, which has now become part of a wetland, overflows and comes down the street. In fact, one of the neighbors called the city, uh, two years ago because he thought the fire hydrant had broken, and it was just overflowing onto the ground. The other thing, uh, I've picked up from reading some of the information is I definitely take umbrage with the fact that we're calling this a planned urban development. It is not. It is just a well-packed and stuffed residential area. It doesn't even meet the original ordinance for what a planned urban development is because I read it. So, I'm not quite sure, Phase 1 was barely a planned urban development because it's still missing many of the components it was supposed to have. Phase 2 is not gonna have any of that, and we added seven houses on top of the fact we got one acre of additional wetland. I'm, I'm really happy about that. But that upper northeast quadrant, uh, on the development on the Phase 2, it's gonna look like a mobile home park with the slabbed houses all sitting up higher than all the other houses in the area. The houses that are on the 65-foot spacing probably will look pretty good, and I gotta give Horton some credit for their, uh, the, the building that they, they intend to do actually looks pretty good. And some of the buildings in, in Phase 1, driving through that area, the housing actually looks pretty nice. But on the same token, we are not definitely carrying the same type of development area that Phase 1 has into Phase 2 with the density we're gonna have there. So, those are definite, uh, concerns of mine, uh, just pointing out from reading the material. There's definitely some, uh, conflict between what the actual summary says and what the actual ordinance says should be there, uh, with the spacing. And some of those yards are gonna have like 20-foot backyards, which obviously you're not putting decks on, they're gonna butt right up to the wetlands, especially on the, uh, on the east side, if I'm not mistaken. So, it's gonna be a very, very dense area, the traffic flow through that area is just gonna be terrible only because they're totally landlocked. And to say, "Well, we're gonna wait till," and this is in the summary, I believe, uh, the, the planned development of the north section, which will hopefully finally give relief up to like 97. Right now, talking to some people that live in that area, Harrow Avenue, trying to get onto 97 in the morning, uh, is not only a painstaking process, it's probably dangerous because we don't have a, a roundabout there, and I've talked to a few people that actually go all the way around the whole area and come back out over to Goodview, uh, just to get on a main thoroughfare. So, we've got multiple issues here. One of, obviously, is a lack of infrastructure, trying to build this, and, uh, I'm not quite sure which way the, the traffic is gonna go for construction traffic, but there's only one or two, or actually really one convenient way, and it's gonna be through Phase 1, from what I've seen. And if you look at it from the air, you, you're gonna go, there's no way they're gonna be driving big construction traffic and, and trucks through, uh, the, the western side of that. There's not, there's not one straight road. So, those are items to keep in mind, but I think that need a complete review. I think it's doable to an extent, and it's unfortunate that Horton got, uh, kinda left with a short stick trying to figure out how to put something in this development that would be worth. be workable. But right now, the, those miniscule lots, it's gonna, like I said, it's gonna look like a, a park up on the northeast quadrant up there for mobile homes and, and the traffic. So those are items I'd like you to consider, and I do thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi there, good evening. My name is Nikki Searing, and my address is 20710 Hamlet Court North. We were early build 2017, so we were one of the first houses to be done, seventh house in the neighborhood to be completed. We are in the wayback corner. I've done some math over the last couple days. I'm a loan officer, it's in my brain, it's what I do, but I can't get this out of my head where I know everyone that lives there, we are a very close community. Our kids are close, our families are close, our extended families are close. And I go and look, there could be one, possibly two houses that have one individual living in them. So you take 110 houses times two, we have 220 vehicles right now in our neighborhood. You add in teenagers, you add in anyone that's coming, anyone that's staying with you, we have multiple houses that have three, four, five cars, they have multiple teenagers. We have over 150 children in that neighborhood, 250 children. 7:15 bus stop between Leela, St. Peters, the middle school, and the high school. 110 children waiting for the bus, my children included. I have one that just started at the middle school and one that's at Scandia. That's the 7:15 bus stop. Not, mind you, the construction folks that leave earlier before that. We now have a 7:30 or an 8:30 bus that comes to pick up for Forest View Elementary. That's gonna be about 40 kids. We have an 8:40 bus that comes from Scandia, that's about 40 kids. That transition stops at 8:40. Now you go to drop off. The first drop off from the middle school, Leela and St. Peters, is 2:30. Your next one's gonna be 4 o'clock from Forest View, your next one's gonna be Scandia from 408. How are we gonna maintain traffic for these children? Where's the safety gonna come in? We already have people April through November that park on our streets, and I urge all of you to please come drive through there. You have my address, come sit in my driveway and watch the mornings unfold, watch the afternoons unfold, all the additional traffic, the dump trucks, the cement trucks, everything that's coming and going, there has to be another exit. We have to be able to get out on Goodview. Right now, we sit at 97 and Harrow for 15 minutes trying to get out. And that's if you don't go around 202nd, because that's also what I do, because I don't wait anymore, and I also don't wanna be killed. You got people going 65 miles an hour. Now we're gonna add in another 240 vehicles to that entrance and exit with no exit, no way out. I just don't know how it's gonna be maintained, how it's gonna be managed, how we're gonna care for the safety of everyone in that neighborhood. Number two, I am a victim of this wetland buffer. My basement has flooded three times. I still, to this day, have a foot of standing water when it has not rained outside in the back corner of my lot that the city has came, put drainage pipe through, all the way through five different houses. We now have water on top of that overflowing like a lake through our backyards. The watersheds, the water, the issues and the problems that we already have now need to be addressed, need to be fixed with the city before we continue on with these other people that are gonna get the same kind of damage that we have. We have had multiple, multiple 40, 50 houses that have had flooding damage done because these things were not dealt with initially. I got told that we were gonna have custom houses, the rest of the development, that's what it was gonna be. There was to be no split-level homes in our neighborhood, two stories and ramblers. The last builder that came in, the city approved Capstone to come in, and they put in 25 split-level homes. It was never in the plans initially. So I get the plans, I applaud them, I appreciate them, we want the people, we want the bigger community, but how us as neighbors, community members, how do we guarantee that the house plans aren't gonna change? How do we know that we're not gonna add in split levels after we're only approving two stories and ramblers, which was done on Phase One, but now that didn't follow through on Phase One? Those split levels got brought in, they got built by Capstone, somebody, a builder that wasn't even approved in the initial build-out between Lennar and the custom builders. And I guess those are really honestly the major concerns, that's a lot of what a lot of us neighbors really have to worry about. Is there a children's safety, the in-and-outs, the waters? What can we hold the city accountable for, what's being approved and what's being followed through? And that's all I have for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Gary Beas, I live at 7209 208th Circle North in Phase One. I'm, I'm honestly a little bit torn because I do, I have looked forward to this development since we moved in, because this neighborhood, I feel Phase One desperately needs another egress to the west. And I have been looking forward to Chestnut Creek being connected to Bridle Pass via 208th for access to the middle school, for access to the high school, and for another way in and out of the neighborhood besides Harrow and 97, which has been repeatedly stated, and I will reiterate, is frankly a death trap. I'd encourage anybody to look up the accident statistics for that intersection, it's insane. And yes, we do have the option of going out and around to the south, but with the current plan for, or proposal for a big public works facility and redevelopment down in that area, I'm not real, I'm not real excited about that remaining a viable option either. So Chestnut Creek does need another egress, and it needs access that does not involve 97 for our kids to get a half a mile as the crow flies to the middle school and to the high school, and for us to be able to access the roundabouts at 61 and 97 and at Goodview and 97, because there's no, there's no effective safe way in and out of the neighborhood right now. The other thing is that when we moved in in 2018, as our HOA president, Matt Guptill, stated, there was, there was extensive description about how we were going to get a park. There were promises about how there would be a park when, when Phase Two happened, there would be a park one way or another, if not the land itself, the money to purchase a park, neighboring it, it was going to happen, it was going to happen, it was going to happen. I understand that you folks don't have any control over what happened then. However, I moved in, in 2018 with a six-year-old, a four-year-old, and one on the way. I now have a 13-year-old, an 11-year-old, and a six-year-old who have lived in this neighborhood now for seven years. The only accessible playground within a mile is down a two-lane road with no shoulder and a 45, and a 40 mile an hour speed limit. It's unsafe. It is not safe for a family to travel to that playground by foot, by bike, by any other vehicle other than an automobile. We cannot approve Phase Two on another promise of someday there will be a park, because it's already been nine years, and if another nine years go by, those of us who moved in in 2017 and 2018 are gonna see our kids born, get their driver's licenses, graduate from high school, and move out of the house before there was any green space for this neighborhood as promised back in 2016. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Carrie Chavez, I live at 6992 208th Street North, and I am the last house to be built that I believe in Phase One. So I butt right up to Phase Two. And there were, there are some questions that I have that I'd like to possibly put in all of your minds tonight. And I can say, just with being the last build there, my sump pump, it has been a rainy season, but my sump pump has continuously gone off. I did have to buy a drain to push the water further even down the back of my yard this year. And being told that they're going to drain some of those lakes to make, or those ponds to make them smaller for this next build is a concern to me, because where is that water going to go? And I don't want any more in the back of my yard or in my sump pump. So I would say the, I am also concerned about the current road that support our community right now, and can they support the proposed increase in population? And I think Nikki was pretty accurate as far as the number of kids and, and the number of new cars that will be going through there. I think there are a lot of us that are really excited for that connection and for our kids to be able to not have to go on 97 and, and get to school, but I've, I've gone on that side, and I don't see why many people will take that route out. There's lots of lefts, rights to get out to Goodview and on to 97 to go to work. And so I propose, I would assume there might be some, some kids getting to school, some teenagers driving through that space, but more often than not, people going to work are likely gonna need to go up to 97 to get there. So, and as you all know, that's a complete mess out there to try to get out, and very, very dangerous. So my question is, are, are we, are our current roads that are available there able to support the second phase? What I was told at our first discussion is that D.R. Horton doesn't have to worry about any of that. So my ask to the city is, do you have to worry about that? Do you help us with that concern so that we don't have another 250 cars driving past our house? And collectively, probably more, being Forest Hills and other people will be driving through there to school as well. I'm very concerned about the sizing of the houses. They gave us a few floor plans, and I did look at Phase One, it does look like there are additional five houses at least that they've added to their current plan. It does seem very small and not consistent with the way our current phase looks. My question would be, does, does the housing mix that they're providing us, is that going, is there some sort of consistency there? Is that tracked? Is there a number of potentially slab-on-grade houses that can be built and a max cap on those so that it protects maybe some of the house values that are going to be built there? That might be, you know, a two-level or a two-story home, as well as the ones that are built in Phase One. Building some of the maybe more slab-on-grade homes and, given the market, the way that it is right now, that might be a more popular or attractive option. And that worries me to think that we could have, you know, a very good portion of these homes being smaller and maybe attracting more potential homes that could be rented out. And again, that would affect our resale as well. The park is, I do have kids too, and, and the park is a, would be lovely. I know Forest Lake is very known for just protecting the wildlife and really trying to absorb as much nature as we currently have. I don't see this large development supporting that, but if there is something, I did look up a few just kind of park numbers, and the National Park and Rec Association said, you know, for 575 people in a development, they were maybe anticipating three to six acres of parkland as an appropriate amount to a lot there. And that maybe isn't necessarily your park, playground park, it could be something as beautiful as walking paths or something where, I mean, a lot of people like to walk their dogs and, and bike, you know, maybe it's not necessarily a park, but it's something we could support Forest Lake's nature and wildlife and, and provide some sort of acreage towards that. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening, Brian Nelson, 20873 Hardwood Road North. Just wanted to answer a couple of questions. You guys were asking about insurance. You don't have to have extra insurance, you just better make sure you have the drainage piece of the insurance covered, because it's considered drainage, because it's a sump pump issue, not a flooding zone. So just wanted to come up, let you guys know that. I do wish there would be a park. I was the first HOA president in the first part of the neighborhood. I knew Ron Bestir, the developer, and the declarant, Steve Sodowsky, very well. I had many conversations with them, and I know they were gonna be putting in a park because it was either 400K or something that the city, they would have to pay the city or put in a park. So they opted that they would put in a park, so I know a park was gonna come, and we were promised that. Another thing, I'm hoping D.R. Horton keeps the beauty. Our first phase is beautiful, it's rock fronts on the front of the neighborhoods, you know, a lot of brick and stuff and rock. It's not just garage and a door, you have a lot of visual on the front of houses. And I know a bunch of trees were cut down when they came in to build, so there was a requirement on trees, and they did have to be overstories. I heard D.R. Horton say, or somebody said, they don't necessarily have to be overstories, but in Phase One, we had to plant overstories. We had to plant at least two overstories and one under. So hopefully Phase Two will continue that so that in time, it'll be mature looking. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak, sir?
Hector Vergara, I live in 7213 208 Circle North. And here, just to support the neighbors, I don't have kids anymore, my kid is 20 years, 21, he's, he's in two weeks now, so, but I definitely believe families with younger kids or small kids, they need a place to, to play. We moved into Forest Lake 21 years ago, the first house my son walked in was in Forest Lake. And I, I'm proud to say, you know, he's a Forest Lakian, you know, so, and we like the community, we have the opportunity to move somewhere else, and we decided to stay here. And he's very disappointed that we don't have the support from our city to, to support what we need, you know, and our kids need a park. They need a park to play. It's really hard to, to picture all my neighbors' kids playing on the street, not enjoying their wildness, you know? When you're a kid, you have to be wild, and you need a place to where you can release that energy. And if you don't have that, then you have a problem. Another factor is safety. Safety is, is high there, you know? So we have, you know, serious, our community streets, and people like to speed up from time to time, and I don't see the police there, you know? So I don't see someone to patrol the streets to, to put some order there. My house faces on the backyard Harrow, and that street, after the darkness, you know, it becomes a little speed road, you know, so, and, and I don't see the police there, you know? So I'm afraid, you know, when my son works nights, you know, somebody's gonna, you know, hit him, just because, sometimes they even drive with the lights off, you know, just to, to hide, you know? So it's, it's, it's sad to see that, you know? One of my own safety precautions for one of my neighbors, you know, I see his little boy running around, I give him a safety cone, you know, just, and I told him, I said, please put this out, you know, when your kid is playing, because, you know, I want people to know that there is someone around, you know, and it's a little one, you know, so, 'cause I don't wanna come home and, and, you know, get the news that something happened, you know? So I think that's, those are my biggest concerns. And on top of, you know, investment, you know, our house is an investment, and now that we are learning that the next, the new community is not gonna be the same thing. we are learning that the next, the new community is not going to be the same thing what we have now when we were promised that we're going to have the same for phase two, it's a big disappointment and it's also a big loss for us. You know, we have a few years to retire and we don't, I didn't buy a house for fun. I buy, I bought a house because I need that money for my retirement and even I, no offense, you know, everybody struggles and everybody needs some, something to start. But when you give us the promise that we're going to have the equal community for phase two and now something lower is going to go there, then my money's going to go down. So with that said, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Carl Ziegler, get one more, one more quick comment. It sounds like the water problems are a lot worse than even I suspected. And one of the questions I did come up with later on was what data was used for the, from the Comfort Lake watershed district on both phase one and phase two? Given the timeframe, if that data was from, say, 2014 or 15, given what we're seeing with climate changing in the area, particularly here in Minnesota, perhaps that data needs to be, just make sure it's current for any, any future reference or if we revisit this again. And one other thing too, obviously most people here are from phase one. I'm the only one from Greystone and most of my neighbors on the west side of the street did not get any notification or they weren't aware of it. So I would respectfully ask if there's continuing conversations that a wider dispersion of information go to the, to the neighborhoods, especially up to like 210th and, and west, on the west side? Because we're all going to be impacted just as phase one is, if we're going to have traffic going through the areas, they need to be aware of it too. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Corey Perkott. The address is 6991 208th Street North. We're across the street from, from Cary. We butt up right up, there's one house in between where the phase two is, is coming in. And we, we bought the house in 20, we closed in 2020 with, with no aspir, with no false ideas of that it wasn't going to be developed. We want it to be developed. I mean, it, it's been empty. Our kids have had a really good time. They, they, there's a big pile of dirt that they, they slide down in the, in the winter time, the neighborhoods, people go through the trails. We knew it was going to be developed, so this isn't a surprise. But what is a surprise is kind of the, it, it feels like there's a lack of consideration to this park. We said it ad nauseam. We're, I'm, I'm on the boat, like, I wasn't here when promises were made or it was discussed. I understand that it wasn't part of the regulations or whatever it may be, but the fact that is, that there's so many people have said it's, it is truth and, and I feel like our neighborhood, we want to make sure that our neighborhood has, has a voice and has a fill. And I just, I've got some numbers for you. I'm a numbers person myself and I'm just going to put these numbers out there. And I feel like these numbers should matter to the city of Forest Lake opposed to just taking in, like if, who brought up Capstone? Who brought up Capstone? I think you brought up Capstone. They said, hey, we'll come in, we'll buy 20. They weren't part of the original plat. So just because of the big dollars, these, these are some, these are some real numbers or average, averages. So if you want, put pen and paper, if you want to take a second to get those out, here's some averages. Since 2016, approximately each one of the houses in phase one have been about, have provided about $30,000 of tax dollars. It's not directly to Forest Lake, that's from the, the county, $30,000 piece. About 3.6 million, about 3.6 million of the 119 or so houses that are there, not each people sitting in this room, some people have moved in and out, but approximately 316, $306 million of taxes from these properties, which is the point. We want to develop, they, they increased the tax, the, increased the tax rolls. And we're asking for a park. We're asking for safe streets. It doesn't seem like it's a really, really big ask to make sure that, yes, we want the development there, but we want them to be a partner and just, and be part of that community too. So that's, that's really all I had to say.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carrington. So there are a lot of kids in my neighborhood and we don't have a lot, a lot of places to go to, like to play in outdoors. Like the only thing I can think of is this big dirt mountain that we go and sledding on in the winter. But I think a lot of the kids and me on like this one block would really appreciate, want and like a playground in the neighborhood because there's a lot of kids like my age or younger. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. Corey McCullough, 20701 Hamlet Court North. I think a lot of people brought up a very, a lot of very good points, so I won't hit those. I just want to reiterate the issues with like the lot sizes that are proposed, with the, the wetland buffers that have actually moved closer. A lot of those homes have appeared, or appear to, or are shown to have two-car garages. As Susan had mentioned, you know, Forest Lake likes our toys, right? Recently just approved this year was the, you know, ability for people to use golf carts, ATVs safely around town. So more people are even buying toys now because of that change and you can start to see people use those. So people have to have, have a place to put those. If you have a, a family of, or a four-bedroom or more home and you have the cars now on top of toys, plus wetland buffer, buffers that don't actually allow you to put sheds on your home, so where, where are you going to keep your lawnmower and your two, your two cars for mom and dad and then the two children that may be living there? So I just asked that, you know, we consider what size lots that we're putting in here and that at minimum, the, the, the homes can at least have enough size to put a three-car garage on that home. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening. Nicole Bartolak, 20644 Hamlet Avenue North. Everyone else has hit on most of the topics. The one that I'm going to drive home more for particularly is the wetland and the wetland buffer. On the two pictures you showed up there, it is already discussed that one of the ponds will be diminished. Actually, it even shows it's the largest pond on there, that it just disappeared from the picture. Not sure how that happens. Where, where is that water going? I am lucky enough, in my particular house, our sump does not run that much. However, my house happens to be one of the tallest standing ones in the neighborhood at the moment. So I lucked out. Good for me. My neighbors, not so much. We, our house in particular is just a lookout, it's not a walkout, which is fine. I think that helps us. My neighbors, actually to the, let's see, south of me, their pump runs so much that our, their neighbors to the south of them has even been hit with water several times as they're like walking, trying to get between houses. It just, the wetland buffer really concerns me. Like I said, luckily we have not been impacted, but I know several in our neighborhood who really have. And that fact that one of the ponds just kind of disappeared in the plans really concerns me. That's all. Thank you.
I have to make my notes, so my apologies. Anyone else wish to speak? This is your time. We will bring it back to the commission once we close the public hearing, so anyone else wish to speak? Seeing no one come forward, and before I close it, I want to thank everyone who gave comments tonight, very professional, a lot of decorum, greatly appreciated on behalf of the city and the planning commission. So thank you very much for that. So with that, we will close the public hearing at 7:39 PM.
Chair, Chair, could I just make a couple points of clarification of some comments that were brought up tonight that I want to just clear the air? Overstory trees will be required in the development. It's not that they won't be required to put in overstory trees. When we, staff acknowledges the neighborhood's desire for parkland. When the city council approved the, the neighborhood in May of 2016, the approval was for a complete cash in lieu of land dedication. So I don't know what was shared from the developer or the builders or the realtors at the time. The city's approval was for land, or for fees in lieu of land. And then lastly, I just wanted to clarify a comment that was made about wetland going completely away. There will be an increase in buffers. There is no wetland bill proposed for the development. There's actually an increase in buffer areas. So I can show you if you'd like on the screen if you'd like, but...
Can I, just since you're, I believe, addressing my question, I'll be a step back. I'm sure the chair... Does that work or not?
Come on up.
I guess maybe I misspoke on that. I realize the buffers are increasing, but if we've learned anything in phase one, a buffer does nothing. A buffer is literally just a stake in the ground saying, hey, don't do anything here. That doesn't address levels of homes or where the water's going. And like I said, I'm not that the buffers, it may be increasing, the buffer may be increasing, but like I said, per the plans, there is one pond that just disappears. And like I said, I don't know how that happens on that plan.
Sure. And I might, I don't have full civil set shown tonight because we just try to kind of keep it high level, but we certainly, ponds are not disappearing and we certainly can show that to the general public.
I guess one of the plaits that was shown, it shows water and then the next plat, there's just no water and it shows it as a wetland buffer, but it's the largest pond in that development.
Chair, I'm just going to show really quick. So I think you're referring to the pond that's, exists today onsite?
There's like four or five that actually exist today. Thank you. Yes, it's that one right there. So it's the one to the north or south?
Center top.
I can't, it was a colored map that you showed. It's the one with the red around it. It shows a wetland buffer.
It's the wetland to Abby?
Thank you.
The picture they have, is that a...
No, please, yeah, no.
It's, the picture they have is maybe at a time when there's more water in the, on the site, so the wetlands got water in it. We, we don't plan to change that.
Okay.
The wetland stays, we're not impacting the wetland. It's not a pond, but Mr. Bloom here with our engineering firm can certainly address more questions on stormwater and such than I can of the commission's all desires, but...
Okay. That, that was what we just noticed on the difference, where it looked like it disappeared.
And, yeah, and I just want to clarify, nothing is disappearing, no wetlands are being filled. It just was trying to convey the buffers around those areas, not necessarily the, the pond itself.
That's fair. All right, thank you.
Abby, have you finished?
I am. Thank you, Chair.
Could the line engineer like to come up? There's a lot of angst on water and, and to be honest with everyone in the crowd, it's always an issue in Forest Lake because there's a lot of water up here.
Thank you. My name is Ryan Bloom with Westwood Engineering. I'm the civil engineer for the Chestnut Creek Second Edition. And yeah, sorry, I was a little impatient, but yeah, so I definitely have some information to add to the topic. When the first edition was complete, the entire second edition was masqueraded. All of the future ponds, all of the roadways were subcut, three feet for future, so, and then it sat for the last eight, nine, nine years. And what's happened is there's no permanent outlet control structures in any of the basins. All of the street roadways that were prepared for future pavement have filled with water with the tight clays that are there. And so, and yes, the wetland areas and the stormwater ponds are, are full. You know, we've had a lot of rain this year and the soils don't infiltrate very well. So the, the ponds are holding more water now than they were designed to. They're going up to the, the max level. And so with this development, there'll be storm sewer infrastructure placed that will be fed to the proposed streets that will connect into the existing storm sewer system that will normalize the pond waters, the levels of the wetland, the levels of the pond. And, and the wetland buffers are designed for additional treatment for the wetlands that are there, right? You know, we, we've been talking about setbacks from the buildings to the wetland buffers. We're providing wetland buffers of, you know, 50 feet, 75, 100 feet in some areas, which is going to be better for the water quality of those existing wetlands, right? And it's, it's no mo areas, it's natural vegetation. And so, so yeah, I hope that, that helps, I guess, in terms of why we're showing less water in those ponds.
If I may ask a question, and these people all live in the first half?
Yep.
Well, any of what you're doing in the second half helped their issue in where they currently...
Well, I, I can't speak to their home elevations, right? And, and how they were built relative to the, the existing ponds. I know from working with engineering here, they're, you know, very particular on elevations of our proposed basements, high water levels of our wetlands and our ponds, separations from openings relative to emergency overflows that we have with these basins, all to ensure that we're not going to have flooding within, but, but in addition to that, I mean, we're looking at groundwater presence relative to basement elevations to, to avoid that non-stop sump pump. I mean, the, the builders don't want that either, right? I mean, we, we want to prevent that. And so that'll, having functional stormwater ponds that have a normal water level that's, that's lower than what's currently out there, I mean, it's, it's all going to help those, those homes. I guess I can't speak to, to these homeowners, right, relative to where they live, but our, our water will be connected to the existing infrastructure that's there and will be working through the, the stormwater pond system that is currently in place.
Can you just touch on your stormwater design that was updated?
Yeah, so with the, with the, the project that was graded, there was a previous stormwater management plan that was done by the previous engineer. We've had to update it and we're working with the Comfort Lake watershed to get their review and approval of not only the stormwater ponds, but the filtration, the filtration benches that we need to be placed around the ponds. Those are currently not in place. Right now, they're just, you know, masqueraded ponds. So with that, we'll be adding to that as well. So, and, and in addition to the stormwater quality, we have to meet the rate control so that we're, we're retaining the water and, and, and letting it out over time.
Susan? I have a couple of questions. One, setbacks are not, are not storage. Setbacks are treatment. And so you're not storing any more water as you, as you, as you increase your setbacks? What is the final outlet from pond to pond to pond of the water that's in your, your ponds? Realizing, those who don't learn from history are doomed to repeat it. Realizing how tight those clay soils are in that area, has that changed your calculations on storage requirements? And has that changed your calculations on outlet and discharge from the ponds? And which direction is that going to? Because I live in the area, Big Swamp is not that far away from there and it's, it's all flat ground to there.
Sure. Sure. So our stormwater system, now if we want to pull up an overall, and, and to speak to your other part of your question, so yes, these would be consistently called C or D soils. So what that does is it leads to a much higher curve number, which means there's a more runoff, you know? And so that's how our pond calc's are designed. You know, if you have sandy soils, it's a much lower curve number you're factoring in, a lot of infiltration into the soil, you know, when you... So, so our ponding that's in the center of our site connects to two existing ponds that, that will come behind the cul-de-sac there, up to the north. Yep, keep going, keep going. And, yeah, keep going up and then go directly east.
I can't, I'm going to keep, I can, I'm just not going to do it right and I don't want to be trying to do something. And I don't want to be trying to do something.
She's gotta get it up on the screen from that location. There we go.
Okay, so yes, so, this, this is one of our proposed stormwater ponds, it's already been graded, there's an existing wetland here, that's only gonna capture the water that is within these backyards. So all of the roads on this side will connect to this stormwater pond, which will then treat it and run it to this stormwater pond, which then will go to this existing stormwater pond, and then water connects, there's an existing outlet control structure right here, off to the north and east, that's where the water ultimately goes. So all of the new roadways will drain to the three stormwater ponds on our site, and then be treated in those ponds, and then outlet that direction.
What's your concentration time to your final structure, to your final outlet?
I don't have, I don't have the calc's with me...
And my concern is because of, of the soils and the, and the slope in the area, the, the potential for short-term challenges is gonna be much, much greater.
Okay. Well, you know, we'll, we'll take that under consideration, and obviously, we're still, you know, we're still working with the watershed, you know, we did an initial submittal, there'll be subsequent submittals, we're still a bit away from a permit.
Their main concerns are quality, not quantity of backflow.
Any other questions for developers, or nice enough to be standing up here?
Thank you, thank you very much.
I got some comments. One, to the community that showed up tonight, thank you for coming, I just want to let you know, I hear you. And I'm all about safety, I used to drive the school bus, and picking up little kids, and driving down residential streets, if they're not wide enough, it's, it's, it's a nightmare for the bus drivers as well. And for the kids that you're, that you have that are turning to teenagers, and just, teenagers just drive faster. I'm a sixty-six-year-old teenager, I still drive fast. But teenagers just drive fast, and if the roads aren't wide enough, if there's not, if there's not wide enough roads, if there's not enough stop signs, people are gonna get killed, not hurt, they're gonna get killed. So I hear you there. I live in Timber Wolf, the great thing about Timber Wolf Development is it has sidewalks, but the parks are still about six, seven blocks away, and I don't take my kids there, I take my grandkids there. So I can either walk, usually I drive, 'cause I'm not that good at health. But I hear you, I hear you on your water. I live in a twin home, and when it rains, my some pump goes on all the time, I'm right up against kind of a big pond. I like my pond, but the some pump goes on, and I was talking to my insurance man, he says, "Get a, get a backup battery." Well, I got a new, new pump motor for my some pump this year, but if that, if the power goes out, it doesn't matter. And usually, a battery backup that lasts about eight hours is still about $5,000, which I don't have laying around. So, I understand your, your concern about, about the water as well, and about, you know, the water being that close to where your little kids play. My grandkids, I have some are five years old, seven years old, and I don't let them out in my backyard to get lost in my pond, to die in my pond, because it's only twenty feet away from the back end of my house. So I, I just want to say, I appreciate you all for showing up and telling your stories, and telling your concerns. I'm all about safety, I'm all about better roads, I also heard your concern about not letting it look like a trailer court. You've had, had three or four commissioners here that have expressed concern over how small the lots are, about not being able to play with your dogs and your kids in, in a tight space. So I think we have, I know, I'm not, I'm not gonna speak for them, I'm gonna speak for myself, I have heard they're a major, every one of your concerns is not minor, every one of your concerns is a major concern. And I appreciate you showing up tonight and letting us know. And I identify with quite a few of them, so, yep, that's all I have to say.
Other comments, commissioners, questions?
Andy? I, I would just like to say again, I just, the amendment to the PUD to make lots even smaller, it's just something I don't, I don't think is a smart move. I was, I was in that position when I got here today, and I am only more confident in that hearing from the community. These decisions are not, not made at the city level anymore, they're put on us by a bureaucracy above us, and it doesn't work everywhere. And I think this is a perfect textbook example of someone that doesn't live in the community, looking at paper, making a decree, and saying the cities have to follow this. The density requirements are too high, I'm sorry, too, well, yeah, they're too high, and they're making it where you, neighborhoods are dependent on the city being smart enough to put in a park, because no one can play in their own yard. We are, if you're gonna have a twenty-five-foot setback on the street, plus put a sidewalk in there, how are you gonna park two cars? And it's not a question, it's more of a statement, I just, all of these numbers, when looked at individually, yes, they can be defended and make sense, but when you take the feedback from the people who've been through this, I've been in a number of places where we bought when it was dry, and it looked like you had an acre of land, and then the, the regular wet seasons come, and you've got a third of an acre. And I think we're looking at, hoping for that these, these calculations are right and not wrong, and that adding all this impervious surface to this Phase Two is not gonna increase stormwater? I, I just, the more I hear it, the more confident I am to not support this. Thank you.
If I may clarify a couple of things, back when this was approved in 2016, we gave lot sizes, we gave lot widths setbacks, and that's on page two of our report, which is page twenty-one. What they're asking for is less square foot on the lot, to take it from seventy-seven-hundred square feet to seventy-one-hundred square feet, and the side or in a corner, to take it from twenty-five to twenty. Everything else has been approved, they're approved for fifty-five-foot wide lots, and they can build on that with seventy-seven-hundred square feet and a twenty-five-foot side-corner setback, that, correct me if I'm wrong, Abby, that's allowed.
It was my understanding, Abby, that you said that the PUD has expired for second. Did I, did I hear that incorrectly?
The preliminary plat for second expired, the PUD remains with the property because it was acted upon with the first phase. The fact that they're asking for variation to the previously approved PUD, that's what kind of opens it up, the ask to go from seventy-seven to seventy-one, and from the twenty-five to twenty. The developer came in today with all seventy-five-hundred square foot lots with fifty-five-foot widths, and twenty-five-foot front and exterior side yards, we wouldn't be able to have those conversations about the PUD, because it conformed to the original approvals. The only hitch in the giddy up is, since the PUD was approved, the city has reduced the MXR-1 minimum zoning district's minimum lot size to seventy-five-hundred square feet, and so arguably, if they came in today with seventy-five-hundred square foot lots, fifty-five-foot wide, with the twenty-five-foot front and exterior side, they would be in conformance with the originally intended PUD and the underlying zoning code today.
So, I'm, I'm, I'm processing that, so, if, if the original PUD, as you said, is, is essentially still in effect, it is without the city's new MXR, which was, it is, it is majority, it is what it is, and that was something that the city said yes, that is part of our comprehensive plan. That's, that's the, the scope that, that we have here. What, what would be the effect if we said, we want you with your original PUD requirements?
So I think tonight you have the two actions before you, both of make recommendation to the council, right, 'cause this is an advisory body on preliminary matters. So before you tonight is an amendment to the PUD, and the recommendation on a preliminary plat. This council can make recommendation to the city council to approve or deny the amendments to the PUD, and same for the, the preliminary plat. What I would say is that this body asking to, for the developer to conform to the original PUD requirements is, I don't think, an unordinary ask, thereby denying the amendment, but what I would say is because of the history of the development, and because of the nature of our plating system, recommending denial of the plat outside of what would conform with the PUD, and I know that this is kind of talking a little bit in circles, is, would be a little bit uncharacteristic, I don't know that we got great footing for that, if that makes sense.
It does.
I don't know if that made sense to everybody. I, um...
We, we have a limited legal scope of approval and denial.
You have limited, and you, you're an advisory body, but, you know, generally speaking, if their preliminary plat conforms to the underlying zoning code, the comprehensive plan, and the original PUD, we don't have a lot of grounds to deny or recommend denial. Now that being said, I think this body could certainly can make recommendation to the city council to approve, approve with conditions, deny, deny, or approve, approve with conditions that hold them to original approvals. But beyond that, there isn't much else we can do in terms of asking for larger lot sizes than what was originally approved, or even in the MXR-1.
And then, then Abby, in, in the amendment, conditions of approval F is, the final plat shall not be released until all Parkland dedication requirements have been fulfilled. You said earlier that they have already paid for one and two.
They did not pay for one and two, the motion for the council was to accept the, so I can, the Parks, Lakes and Trails Commission at April nineteenth, twenty sixteen, recommend the city accept five-hundred-and-fifty thousand as Parkland dedication fee in lieu of land dedication. This will go back before the Parks Commission next week, they did not pay the full five-fifty, they only paid the requirement for the subdivision that was final-platted at the time.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Well, you've got, you could dip it, dip it...
So, you have a comment?
I just have one comment, and it's on lot sizes. We only have one lot that's at seventy-one-hundred, otherwise, we have one lot that's ten square feet under seventy-seven-hundred. So, if it makes it feel better, or works for the group to comply with the seventy-seven-hundred square foot that was originally approved, or the seventy-five-hundred, Abby, you'll have to help which, which rule takes precedence over this one, but we could certainly do away with one seventy-one-hundred lot, and spread it out, 'cause I think in the end, by the time we get the pond access, we're gonna have to do something anyways, so we just take away the seventy-one-hundred lot, and that'd get us back into complying. I don't, we must've just missed something as we were coming through and realized we got one lot that we're, we're discussing so much about, so, if it works, Abby, we could certainly adjust the minimum lot sizes either to seventy-five or seventy-seven-hundred in the resolution, and go forward and stay with what was originally approved.
Do you know how many of, on the corners, that you have twenty footers?
That's the one thing, I can't tell you off the top of my head, is how many s...
I thought I'd ask.
I know, I, I was thinking the same thing, how much does it change if we change from twenty to twenty-five, and my only concern is, we're also working with engineering on trying to solve the easement widths and getting pond access, so if we widen out some easements, it needs things to slide, and I'm afraid that if we, if I say yes to twenty-five, I may paint ourselves in the corner, but we certainly will work at it, and maybe when we come back to you with final plat, we can say, guess what, folks, we were able to solve the twenty-foot, got it to twenty-five, but right now, I would prefer to say a twenty-feet side-corner setbacks. I mean, we, we've done it other places, and buyers have not seen the buy, homeowners do not call up and scream at us, so, I think we're okay there. I think we're okay with our backyards, 'cause we do it in other places, along wetlands, and our buyers seem to be able to make it work and such, so, we'd be willing to, for this sake of discussion, change it to either seventy-five or seventy-seven, whatever the boss over there says, and then we would prefer to still leave the corner at twenty.
Okay. And Abby, they're, they're, the developer, this is an all-new developer back here, they're not required to have an HOA in the development, that's up to the developer, correct?
That is correct, I understand that, you know, these lots, this land was a part of the intention of the original Chestnut Creek, but there's nothing binding these properties to that original development, aside from our planned unit development approvals. Now that being said, I can't necessarily speak to the HOA, because that is a private legal agreement, and whether or not the HOA docs and declarations were recorded against these two properties, I can't say that for sure, but I don't believe they have.
So, let me, if I understand this right, Abby, so we can't really vote this down, because it's already been approved, but we can approve it with recommendations?
Yeah, you're gonna make a recommendation to the council anyways, and, you know, voting to deny something when it substantially conforms to the previous approvals, the zoning code, the comprehensive plan, but you definitely can, in your, generally, you can, you can make a recommendation to deny it, we just have to have a basis for denial, right? We have to have that rooted in our code of how it is not conforming to our code or comprehensive plan or the prior approvals.
So we, so we heard a lot of, a lot of opinions, valid opinions, walking to the park on bad roads, no shoulders, safety concerns about the width of the streets, a lot of safety concerns brought up by the, by the HOA about the residents that, that live in Chestnut Creek Edition One. Could they, could we ask them to, like, come together, formulate a list of maybe the top fifteen, ten, fifteen items, and bring it before the planning commission again, and have, have those things be addressed by the, by the builder?
No. We don't have that legal basis. Um, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking for, generally, I know that there are some safety concerns, the development is proposing sidewalks, right? So like, yes, it is, and maybe it's safe to walk in the streets, but we are requiring sidewalks. If it's things like, I did hear from, don't have my names listed up, but somebody who did mention like busing schedules, certainly is something that by the time of, that this body can make the recommendation, that by the time of final plat, the, or at the time of final plat, the developer will submit a construction safety plan, addressing, you know, how to interact, you know, on the, the neighborhood streets, at, especially at bus times, pickup, drop-off type things. But I'm not exactly sure what you would be hoping, asking for.
I, I guess what I'm hoping for is, some of their concerns, like their, say, maybe out of the ten concerns they have, the top five, you know, most urgent ones, that maybe weren't people, the builders weren't aware of this, maybe this commission wasn't... aware of this, maybe this commission wasn't, wasn't aware of. That they be addressed, that they have serious considerations, you know, plus, none of them mentioned resale, you know, that the, that their houses go up in value with the, with this addition, not down. That's a real viable concern. Just to give you an idea, I moved into my neighborhood in Ju- June of '21, and a year later, about 50 yards out my back door, the, the farmer sold his land, and they were, they're putting up 130 single-family houses, which I had no, no cau- no say in. So I understand, I understand what you're, some of what you're going through. I guess I, what I'm asking is that, is, is there any way that their concerns can be addressed as a part of, part of the recommendation?
We heard a lot of concerns tonight, and I do have them documented. I would say a number of them are being, most of them are being met in some fashion or form through engineering review, planning zoning review. That is hard to necessarily check every single comment tonight, because none of it was submitted in writing before the meeting, which is fine. That's why we have public hearings. I think it is in the purview of this commission, if you want to table consideration of the matter and ask the developer to continue to work with the neighborhood, we can certainly help facilitate those conversations. But simply put, this group aside, you've pointed out a really great example of just what it's like living next to vacant land, and some of these, sometimes those are the concerns that we aren't going to be able to mitigate. I'm happy to continue to work with the developer and the neighborhood how we can. I would say that staff would not have recommended approval of this tonight had we had concerns that this wasn't conforming to the city's codes and standards for development.
Susan?
We've got two, two actions that staff is requesting of us tonight. One is the PUD amendment, and I believe that I could argue that under the PUD amendment language it's proposed, item three, the proposed PUD plan is consistent with Chestnut Creek First Edition and provides uniform lots, circulation, landscaping, open spaces, and public infrastructure is not met. I, I, I think that arguments could be made that would not be held up in, in, under review on items eight and nine regarding the impact on EQ, environmental quality, property values, and reasonable enjoyment. PUDs, planned unit developments, cities grant those in, in a way to get something for the city and something for the developer and the, and the residents. And I, I'm still struggling with what the city got in terms of benefit for the planned unit development that is not what we would normally have of any development, which is the, the park dedication funds. With respect to the second thing that we're asked to deal with tonight, I don't understand number two. The proposed project does not meet conditions for establishing a premature subdivision in section 152 of the subdivision ordinance. Abby, could you help me better understand that one?
Sure.
So that I know that it's, that, that, that is something that you consider a reason for us to approve the preliminary plat?
So a premature subdivision, I'm just going to read directly from the code, is a subj- subdivision that should any of the conditions set forth, which exist, a lack of adequate drainage, lack of, lack of adequate water supply, lack of adequate roads or highways to serve the subdivision, lack of adequate wastewater treatment, and inconsistency with the adopted comprehensive plan. And then the last one, the last two is public improvements such as recreational facilities or other public, public facilities reasonably necessary by the subdivision, which must be provided at the public expense, cannot be reasonably provided within the next two fiscal years. And then the proposed subdivision is inconsistent with environmental review programs. So in other words, the first number of items is, if there is not the ability to provide the drainage, to pull the water, to develop the roads or the wastewater treatment system, that is a premature subdivision. If it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan, it's premature with the subdivision. If you can't put in these other public improvements within two years, or pay for the public expense of them within two years, that's a, a premature subdivision, or if it doesn't meet environmental review.
Thank you very much.
Questions, comments, commissioners?
Where in the proposed, um, language you want us to approve, can we acknowledge that the developer agreed to honor the original square footage?
So what I would say is, if you were going to make a motion, so if somebody was ready to make a motion, they could do it in twofold. One would be to move to recommend approval of the preliminary, or the PUD, with the exception of the minimum lot area. And then the second motion would be move to approve, make recommendation to approve the preliminary plat, with conditions all outlined in the staff report. Does that make sense, Andy?
Yep, I just wanted to-
Does it help you? Yep, I think that's the-
Second meeting, just figure out-
Yep, no, I know. So I think that's probably the cleaner way of making the motion on the PUD with the exception of the minimum lot area. If it is the minimum lot area and that 20 feet, that's still an issue, it's make a recommendation to deny the PUD would be the motion. Just having a couple statements of that denial, I hear a few things out there, but picking some of those findings of fact to help support that is always a good, solid, clean way to help support decision-making.
I remember the training.
Pardon?
I'm remembering the training. I'm trying.
That's good.
I guess I have a comment. That little girl that spoke, that took an incredible amount of courage for her to come up here and, and say what she did. And since I'm a new resident, four years, and I want to do right by the residence, that my neighbors, even though it's kind of interesting, is that my wife and I are realtors, and we went for a drive by an open house in your neighborhood. So we drove up and down all the streets that you were mentioning, that you live at, just Sunday by happenstance, just kind of explore more forest-like. And I don't know if there's any way that the planning commission can do right by you tonight. I'm kind of hoping there is, but maybe they're not. Maybe it's, maybe it's another avenue that you might have to explore.
I have a question. You know, the square footage is one thing, but half of my yard is in wetland, so if you have a really narrow, and we don't require a width of a certain amount, that just gets someone in a bad situation, too. So would they, we have to withhold some sort of width then?
We have, both in the original approvals, and then the developer's proposal, minimum lot widths of 55-foot wide and 65-foot wide, which is somewhat consistent, or exists within the first phase. First phase had some lots that went to eat 75, I think, I'd have to pull that report back up. But there are minimum width requirements.
So I think in Forest Lake, your minimum was 65, so how do they get the 55?
Yep, so the way this works is they're doing a planned unit development, and once you do a planned unit development, you can make exceptions within that development. In 2016, when they came before the city for the original development, they proposed 65 and 55-foot wide lots, which the city approved. So now that we've approved these 55-foot wide lots in 2016, within the PUD, they get those in the second phase. It's part of the planned unit development, excuse me, that, that doesn't change. I'm not saying you don't have a valid point, but sometimes, you know, with state statute and everything else, our guardrails get pretty slim before bad things happen to the city. So we'll leave it at that.
I have a, a que- in our table, the 55-foot's in red, as though that's a variable that they're changing. But you're telling me that's not a variable that they're changing, that's fixed, based on something that was approved back in 16 years ago?
Yeah, the 55 was approved. It actually went down to 52 feet in 2016, so they varied between 52 feet and 80 in 2016.
I was just curious, on that page 31, why the 55 was in red there?
Let me just double-check exactly what you're looking at.
Because I understand, the 7100, we talked about that, and that can be, may go away, and the 20, we talked about, but that 55, I was just-
Uh, what page did you say?
Uh, like 31 out of 55, I think.
I can actually speak to, it was the narrative that we submitted with the plan. So the 55 is where it doesn't conform with the zoning district.
Right.
That, so it had nothing to do with comparing it to the existing PUD.
Of what was approved, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, if I might just speak up, I hear, I've heard a lot of different comments from a lot of different commissioners tonight, that there is hesitation to allow for the amendment to the PUD. And I would say that that is, what I'm hearing is the basis of small lots equals smaller yards, and smaller yards in neighborhoods with no parks, doesn't really meet our definition of being flexible. And so what I would say is, there is probably good findings from this commission to recommend denial of the entire PUD amendment, asking them to conform to the standards in place, and then approving the preliminary, a preliminary plat that would conform with the original PUD. That would at least then provide the direction, I think, to the developer and to the council, that the planning commission has heard from the neighborhood that, you know, parkland is important, and even something small for the neighborhood would be appreciated. With that, I think that would give the developer the opportunity to go to the parks commission and to the council, and see what both those bodies also think. But I do think that there's probably enough findings from things that have been said on this, from this commission, that PUDs, well, yes, they allow for flexibility, also should be offering something in exchange to the public. And what I'm kind of sensing from this commission is, you don't, you're hearing the public say, we want to make sure there's not water in our neighbors' backyards, and that there's a place for kids to play. A lot of what we heard. I know there were more, I don't want to simplify it entirely, but...
Thank you.
Okay, realizing that the city council can accept or reject our recommendation? Yes. I'm going to move that we deny the PUD amendment as presented to us tonight, because I do not find that it is consistent with the Chestnut Creek First Edition in terms of uniform lots, circulation, open spaces, and public infrastructure. And that the, the amendment, the amended PUD will not ensure that, I hate double negatives, will not ensure that the, the plan will not negatively impact environmental quality, property values, scenic views, and reasonable enjoyment of the surrounding area. And that the amended PUD does not recognize that the flexibility to the city code that is being provided results in significant benefits to the city in design or proposed use.
I have a motion to deny the changes to the PUD. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. This, there were, any discussion? Susan, there were a number of recommendations that the city had, were denying those, so nope, forget that. Erase what just came out of my mouth. Any other discussion that might be valid? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to move tabling of the preliminary plat. Tabling means that, instead of denial, means that they don't have to go completely back to square one with et ceteras. But my concern is, I want to make sure from the city that the city will be able to provide the required recreational traffic, water management requirements, and it, as detailed in number two, of preliminary plat requirements within two years of the subdivision.
Can you, can you, you're tabling on the basis of, one more time? I just want to make sure I have this good record.
Right, I want to make sure that the city can provide to these new residents the items listed. I want to make sure that all the things that would, would deny this as a premature subdivision, in other words, providing the recreation opportunities, providing the traffic management, providing the water management as required for a full, mature subdivision, can, can be provided to this area within two years. Remember when you, you, you read me the, the ordinance?
Yep. So, I did, you have a motion, I don't know if you want me to speak on it, Chair, at the moment. But I, I think that-
And before it gets to second, I'm willing to modify-
I'm just not certain that you have the ability to table on this, hey, prove to us you can do this, because that's kind of what you asked. They're showing you the plans and asking you to approve them, stating that they're able, I mean, you know, with full confidence, that they're, they're able to do this. So the two years reads, "Public improvements such as recreational facilities." Now, as a reminder, our code says, "Provide land, or the city may accept fee." So it doesn't have to build a recreational facility. "Or other public facilities reasonably necessitated by the subdivision, which must be provided at the public expense, cannot be reasonably provided for." So if the developer cannot do it within the next two years, can the, can the public pay for it within the next two years?
And that's my concern, because I, I, I live in that area, I know Harrow, I know 97, and quite frankly, every day when I go to work, and when I have gone to work, I drive County Road 50 out to 61, just because, otherwise, I don't exit to 97 like normal people would. It is what it is, and that's my choice. But my concern is, I, I, I really want our engineering folks to look at Harrow and at the traffic demand that this full development will, will have on Harrow. It is not a standard width in many areas.
So that's different. What I would say is then, you'd be tabling, requesting the developer to provide a traffic impact study on the impact to this- on the impact to the surrounding transportation system for the city's review. As of right now, we don't have any evidence that this subdivision is necessitating transportation enhancements outside of the platted land area.
Which is our ongoing problem. We always develop, and then they fix the road.
Then we hope they fix the road.
Well, that's, yeah, maybe that's a better term.
How long have you lived on North Shore Trail?
They're working on it.
I was just going to say. I mean, it's a great example, Susan, of how we actually follow through eventually. I mean, you know, some of these roads, County Road fifty and Highway Ninety-seven are state roads and county roads. So those are roads outside of our jurisdiction.
No, I'm worried, more worried about Harrow, to be honest.
So then I think...
And y'all know the curves and...
I hadn't heard that before, and so that's where I'm concerned. It's not then necessarily that it's a premature subdivision. It's you want further assessment of the impact to the existing roadway networks to make sure there aren't additional infrastructure changes needed as part of this development.
It would be premature if Harrow is not capable of handling the traffic demand. For instance, it would be premature if the area water management, to remove water from this subdivision to, for instance, Big Swamp or Hardwood. I think that's still in the Hardwood Creek area, is not sufficient to remove water before it backs up into homes. So it would be premature if those conditions are not in place.
Yeah, and I think at this moment, this body does not have that information to be able to say that. And that generally is something that happens of asking for additional information or additional study is common. But to just, I mean, what it sounds like is you're trying to table it indefinitely.
No, I just want assurance from our engineers that we are not going to create, that by approving this development, we are not going to create the conditions on traffic and on water management specifically that would have otherwise made this a premature development. Mr. Chair, I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Very good. There's no motion on the table, commissioners?
Can, what is, out of all of these documents that we have, which one is the plat? I don't know if that'll walk us back to really knowing what we're talking about. Because they're all kind of bundled together.
Can I ask you some questions? In the Phase One, how many plats were approved for Phase One? Because we keep on that what was initially approved, but we have multiple that were approved throughout the Phase One project, from what I believe. So I'd like to know then, how do we carry over? Will that stay with the Phase Two of what's being approved right now? Or will they continue to change as time goes on, like Phase One was?
So, I don't recall exactly how Chestnut developed. But if the developer decided he only wanted to build part of Phase One, and so he may have just platted twenty-five houses, let's say, and then he came in for Phase Two of that. So that's why you may have had multiple phases. This developer's coming in wanting to do all the lots now. They're not saying, yes, this, we have a future or what we would often call a ghost plat. No, they're coming in saying, "Here's what we want to build on the remaining property." There's not going to be phases as such. Now, I doubt they're going to say, "Build anywhere you want on this parcel." They're going to probably want to take it from one end to the other. But besides that, they're getting approval for the entire land area. This is the, and this is the preliminary plat. So they will come back to us for the final.
I've heard a lot of discussions that there's not much we can do on the second portion of, or the planning commission can do on the second portion of this proposal. Like they can't deny it because it's kind of already been approved. Their hands are kind of tied, their here are concerns. Where can we, as citizens, then go to our next step? If they're not able to help us, where can we go then next?
This is just an advisory body. This body doesn't get to make a decision tonight. So they make recom... Sure, they make recommendation to the city council. The city council has the ultimate decision-making authority. So long as the plat conforms to the city code, the comprehensive plan, the city is in a very likely position to not be able to. They can do it, but we could just, it's in violation of state law.
That's fine. I think, where can we, as citizens, then go to meet those other concerns? Will you show up to the city council, please?
Yeah, the, it all just depends on when this body takes action and it goes back before the city council. All of these comments will be shared with the city council as part of those preliminary packet materials. Chair, Commissioner Apelkowski had asked about which page the preliminary plat was on, and the preliminary plat is on page thirty-nine in your packet that is shown up on the screen.
Excellent.
So if we either approve or reject this, well, I guess my point is, we've already recommended not doing the amendments.
Correct.
Which, the amendments are drafted into this plan.
Correct.
And I think the citizen concerns, we can only tonight deal with the land that's on this map is the problem. Is there a way to table until, well, I guess you can't really, if we're rejecting one, we can't table the other? In reality, right?
I mean, you can table this, but we have to have a reason for tabling. What are we asking for? Because the table isn't like an indefinite.
Sure.
It's a table till you go bring us this. Table till we confirm this. Table till you've redrawn in X, Y, Z ways.
Is there a way for us to just not make a motion? And then that gives them a chance to address the other things? Or does it have to get approved by us to get to council?
The, by statutory requirements, the city does have to take action on preliminary plats within a hundred and twenty days of submission. Failure to act on an application results in automatic approval. So you can table it and give yourself some more time. But I would say, if you're going to table it, we should be providing direction to the developer to provide us back with something. But it's, what is that something? You could also table it until after the Parks Commission has had a chance to make recommendation on the matter. What I would say would be more consistent with the code, the comprehensive plan, and the necessary findings of fact, is to make recommendation to approve with modifications so that it conforms with the original PUD and consideration for parkland dedication if so desired by the council.
So we could make a recommendation that the park goes in first?
Not that it goes in first, but that you make recommendation that the final plat comes back before you with parkland. It's just recommendation, but that gets, I think, across the S. One of the primary concerns that all of you have heard and are struggling with is, the original plan didn't include parkland. You can understand why this doesn't include parkland. You think that possibly this should get some parkland. So therefore recommending, "Hey, council, we think you should probably consider proving the preliminary plat once it's redesigned and meets those original PUD parameters and that parkland is included in as part of that."
I think, yeah, from what I hear from the citizens there, that they were promised to park, and the park never materialized.
They were, unfortunately, they were promised to park by a developer. Basically, the developer did not hold up their end of the bargain. So the city, unfortunately, is not responsible for that. We're trying to make it better in Phase Two, but sometimes developers are, how developers are. And some are better, and some haven't been great. Susan?
I'm going to move approval of the preliminary plat with the proviso that we recommend, we recommend approval of the preliminary plat.
Corrected to...
Correct, revised, revised to meet the requirements of the original PUD.
And to include parkland dedication.
And, and, and for the Park Commission, because I can't, I can't tell them what to do, all right? And after consideration by the city's Park Commission of park requirements for the subdivision.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? So you probably want to know next Wednesday, when is the Park Commission meet?
Next Wednesday night in this room. And I believe their meetings start at five-thirty. I've got a whole stack of cards on the back table. Just shoot me an email, and I can let you know specific time and any subsequent staff reports and get those sent out in advance.
So five-thirty next Wednesday for the park, and then it'll go to the city council. So we are a recommendation board in this case, in this particular issues. We don't make the final decisions. I would be doing some other areas. So they will be taking up this issue. I'm not exactly sure when. My calendar is giving cards back. So when will this probably go to council?
I believe it's October twenty-second. I have a feeling that it could be the Parks Commission is not able to make a recommendation next week. Not saying that's going to be the case for sure. So it could get delayed beyond the twenty-second. But give me just a second, and I will check this date.
And Mr. City Councilmember, you were listening carefully, eh?
I was.
September twenty-second is when it's tentatively scheduled to go to the city council. So Parks and Recreation Commission, September seventeenth, city council, September twenty-seventh, twenty-second. But again, I have a sneaky suspicion our Parks Commission will have a hard time making a recommendation. I don't know for sure. So that could get delayed from that September twenty-second meeting at the council. Any comments submitted to me in writing before those meetings can be distributed to those commissioners and the council in advance as well. So feel free to reach out. Anything in writing gets entered into the public record. But we will revise all of our reports and stuff to address all the public comments. Not word for word, not person for person, but in essence, try to capture as much as we can of the concerns the community has.
An email does constitute in writing?
Correct, email does constitute in writing.
So we...
We have a hundred and twenty days from the date of the determination of an application submission is complete. Our timeline looks like November twentieth is our expiration date.
So, the planning commission held a public hearing. So from here on out, the public hearing's over. So the only time a comment would be taken would be during the open forum if you wanted to speak to an issue.
Correct. So the, each of those upcoming bodies don't have scheduled public hearings. So comments submitted in public will include it in the packet. And then every public meeting has an open forum. So if there is a public meeting, that there is not a public hearing, you can share your public comments in the open forum section right in the beginning of a meeting, so.
So again, thank you all for coming. Have a good evening. And everybody leaves. They don't want to stay for the finale. Public works?
Yeah, so if you could just give it a half second.
Give it a minute. If we can ask you to take the conversation to the hallway, please?
So that, so that we can finish our meeting, please.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay, but you just have to be quiet. All right, let's try item eight again, the Public Works Building Steering Committee?
The city council is elected to form a steering committee to help with the input related to the potential development of the Public Works Building. This is going to be a committee to help with things like design staff. Either myself or Stephen will be included on that committee. Question was raised whether or not there's interest from any member of the planning commission. There would only be one. We're trying not to oversaturate any steering committee. Staff is happy to represent the planning commission because the theory is it's bringing forth the planning commission's concerns. But the question was raised if anybody on this body would like to also represent, be represent, represent. Represent!
What's, what does the steering committee do?
They'll probably meet just a couple times over the next six to twelve months, maybe a little bit longer, to probably react to design things. You'll be pulled in on matters that are more relevant to your commission, your body. So when the exterior of the building, the, you know, site design, some of that sort of stuff, that's when you're, the planning commission, land use matters, that's when you would ask to be a part of that committee.
Is it a volunteer position?
It is a volunteer position. The involvement would most likely be during daytime hours, but probably late afternoon type of thing, maybe early evening. Very nominal amount of commitment, but it would just be to have planning commission presence as part of the steering committee.
How you put me down?
So I also saw another hand raise. So you guys want to draw straws or arm wrestle?
I defer.
So I don't see anybody else jumping up?
All of us would be willing to help if you want to.
We only just need one person. So that's where it's, I mean, stuff will come back before you. Obviously, this building will have to go through like site plan review, but this is just steering committee to help with the development. So I hear Martin would like to participate. Susan, you said you're good if somebody else wanted to. So all right, all in favor of Martin, say aye.
Aye.
Great. Just moving right along into staff updates. Is that all right?
Absolutely. We'll start with our esteemed councilperson, Mr. Larson.
Quite the meeting tonight, huh, folks? Chairman and commissioners, just nothing really too much to pass. Just to let you know, there is a survey out there that the council is asking as far as tax information and where you'd maybe like to see selections as far as tax money possibly going to. If you prefer public safety or parks or whatever. Takes just a couple minutes for you to fill out, and we've gotten some pretty good responses so far.
Where is it and how has it been publicized? Because I try and stay on top, but I haven't seen it.
It's on the city site. I put it on my site. I know it's on Facebook stuff too, but also on the city's website.
I can send out an email as well, if you'd like, for all direct commissioners and then for you folks to share. I could, it's probably just not a bad thing to see if our clerk's office could send it to all our appointed elected officials.
There you go, bam. Just something quick. Kind of going through Abby, Mark Stotts, and... Just something quick, I'm kind of going through Abby, Mark Stotts, and Jolene. We'd like to do some type of a recognition for our commissioners of all areas. So we're looking at possibly hosting a barbecue at the park. So we kind of tentatively picked like a ninth or so of next month, roughly. We're still working on it and a timeframe, but just to let you know, we'd like to put something together for everybody to come out and enjoy a hot dog or a hamburger and socialize and enjoy the day. And thank you for your services.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Larson?
Y'all starting the budget process now?
We've been working on it. We had a workshop, and like I say, that's another reason why we kind of threw the email out. We're looking for feedback from the community as far as things too. We're a handful of people, and we're trying to make the, the right decisions for everything. But like you know, when it comes time to sharpening the pencil, you got to be selective in what you're doing at Wes. So we'd like some help, we'd like some input from the community, so, but we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Abby?
I want to first introduce our Assistant Community Development Director, Stephen Gilmore, who's joined us tonight. Stephen's on day three of the job, so please, please be nice. I know, he does, yes, he has come back twice. So we're really excited to have his expertise and his support in the community development department. You'll start seeing his face regularly. Ooh, speaking of regularly, you will probably be having some pretty regular meetings through this fall. We've got five subdivision plats in some form or another. You saw one tonight. And just as a heads up, all of the developers and builders think that they're still going to build this year. So it's really fun. No, not all, but they are all really excited to get, move in dirt in Forest Lake this fall. So that is something. Wanted to let you.
All with 55-foot lots?
No.
Some 45 center.
Fifteen, let's do fifteen.
Thank you, Jesse, for that humor. No, no. But you do see some with some request for reduced lot sizes. And all of them have been advised as developer tonight, too. 55 is a hard, we already, we already went to 65, 7,500 square feet recently. That was a big jump for Forest Lake. So.
We ain't Hugo.
Nope, but we still have the same density requirements Hugo has. Commissioner Young? Yeah. Another update for you, Comfort Lake, Forest Lake Watershed District will have their State of the Watershed coming up. I think I may have sent out an email invite to everybody. Go ahead and feel free to sign yourself up for that if you wanted to. And then I had one other note here, and it just says neighbors, so I'm not sure what the. Oh, attended a neighborhood meeting tonight for Forest Lake Garage Condos, so that is one of the plats. Not all plats are residential. Off of Forest Boulevard, that will be coming before you in October. Maybe your second meeting in September might be canceled, but then two in October, but. But I did attend that, and when Stephen and I left at a quarter to six, not a person had showed up, so. It was good.
No surprise.
Any questions for me while we're here? Can you sigh like that? It doesn't give me a lot of confidence.
Oh, no.
Broach a great.
We, we have the environmental center down there. And one of the things that the Planning Commission requested as part of the environmental center development was that there be, in addition to the berm, that there be significant planting along 61.
Uh-huh, 100%.
I haven't seen them.
No, you haven't.
You, if I may chastise you for a second, need to get on the city email because it came out in Jolene's weekly report that it's taken care of.
It's not taken care of, but we have been working with the county. They did have a draft final landscape plan that myself and Public Works Director Dave Adams worked through with them that puts in significant landscaping, even including in the right-of-way. We are working through a development agreement amendment with them that they will maintain that right-of-way landscaping for a couple of years until it's mature. So then that way, we don't have to take on the responsibility of failing, failing infrastructure before it even grows. But yes, that had been something that had been working on. Thank you for bringing it up. I don't always remember to follow back with you guys on those things.
Thank you.
But now that Stephen's here, I remember.
Questions to Abby? Stephen, anything to add tonight?
This is the reason why I moved here. That just seeing how great every, the citizens of the city are and how passionate they are and respectful of everything is absolutely the, just an affirmation that I made the right choice. Where'd you move here from? Florida? Yeah, so it's going to be a nice winter.
They have zoning in Florida?
What?
They have zoning in Florida?
Yeah, oh, yeah, we're not Houston. Yeah, there's definitely.
Yeah, I've been to Houston.
Yeah, it's, it, it's bonkers, for sure.
Especially Dade County. All right, thank you. Welcome to the, well, to the humble Planning Commission.
Yeah.
Andy, anything?
No.
Susan?
Nothing, I apologize, I, I like submarine your earlier opinion, so.
Oh, no, it's perfectly fine. My admiration is still strong. Nothing.
Jesse?
Nothing.
Martin?
Great meeting.
I have nothing to add, so with that, the chair is looking for a motion to adjourn. I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, it's a non-debatable motion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you all for your time this evening.